Let her know, I gotta let her know that she my white horse, she my medical. She like my baby mama, know how to take care of me, get my baby problems, you gonna regret everything. So I let her know, I gotta let her know, came through the front door, I'll be ready for, and if it's what you want, I'ma give it to ya, yeah, promise, I'ma give it to ya.
Miss that smile, Lord knows I ain't seen that in awhile, but it's your style, so something must be up keeping you down. You a queen that must be heaven sent. Pray my soul, I must repent for not telling you what I meant and how I felt. Honestly, I'm used to throwing wishes in the well. My conscience tells me that I could've helped without fail. Actions speak louder than words, yeah, that's a lesson that I learned all by myself.
I'd like to reconvene, uh, the regular meeting of the City Council Public Finance Authority. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kelmick.
Here.
Councilmember Mosher.
Here.
Mayor Protem Van der Mark.
Here.
Mayor Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
All present.
Ladies and gentlemen, a pledge of allegiance today is going to be led by Councilwoman Natalie Mosher.
All who can, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no invocation out here.
That was invocation.
No invocation out here, so we'll go. Going through the agenda, members, closed session report by city attorney. Does city attorney have anything to report?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Announcement supplemental communications. City clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
For consent item number two, we received an email regarding appointment of Marc D. Alvarado as our interim city chief financial officer. For public hearing item number three, as of noon today, I believe it was 324 email communications regarding the fiscal year 2324 budget. We received an interdepartment communication regarding the budget received from Honey, Sonny Hahn, I'm sorry, our acting chief financial officer. And I just want the audience to know that the council has a new table with some revised numbers, and so I've asked my staff to make copies of it, and they're going to bring it forward here into the council chambers for distribution. And that's it.
Great, thank you. City clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
For the public.
Assuming the answer is yes.
The answer is yes. So for the public comments portion of the meeting, I'm just gonna, I think we have about 22, I'm gonna call the first 10. Please come down and approach both podiums. Carrie Swan, Shammy Dingus, Ada Hand, Ally Plum, Jaclyn Stappert-Evanson, Sharon Peterson, Tim Geddes, David Reinerson, Joseph Wilson, Michelle Ferry.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Mayor Strickland, City Council, Carrie Swan here. I would like to begin tonight by thanking Councilmember Kelmick for his two fundraising emails full of misinformation and lies. You know, I spent many, many months working on the Save Surf City recall and educating folks in the community on your serial lies and misdirection, but when you actually put it in writing, well, bless your heart. Perhaps your new campaign consultant is Mella Hat's old sidekick. Sounds like it. Anyway, seriously, it is very sad and tragic when a sitting council member uses lies to fundraise to very well-meaning and well-intentioned folks like friends of the library, scare them into believing that Mayor Protem Van der Mark proposed a book ban, which of course, she did not. But fortunately, many attended the meeting last week, got to sit here and see for themselves the lies and manipulation. On the budget, almost exactly one year ago, Councilmember Burns, then candidate Burns, stood right here to present his concerns for the budget going forward. He obviously touched a nerve because Kelmick and Card nearly had a brain aneurysm and violated the Brown Act by lashing back at Mr. Burns. Well, golly, it turns out Councilmember Burns was 100% correct to be concerned one year ago. Before the election and before the new council majority was seated, this situation is no surprise to any of us who have been paying attention longer than last week's meeting. Also, for the record, the new city council majority did talk about this extensively when they were campaigning, not only the increasing budget deficits, but how to improve revenue. Finally, I support cutting the city provided subsidy for Circuit, the shuttle company that we are subsidizing even though they are a for-profit business, and in fact, demonstrated very effectively their massive email lobbying campaign just at how effective they are at data capture and marketing, which is their core business function. I wish them well, but they don't need our tax money subsidy. So I hope the new council majority will get us on the right track. I know the previous council expanded in areas never even intended to be our responsibility, like health and human services, which patently belongs to the county. Cuts are never easy, but those of us who've spent our life in the private sector know it's part of responsible management. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
My name is Sharon Peterson, and I've lived in Huntington Beach for more than 30 years. I've been here a number of times on other issues, but the look at this budget this time has been dumb pounding. I see proposed cuts on things that you have committed yourselves in your campaign, websites, in your online budgets proposals, things that attach on everything that you say that you stand for, protection of children, which was a huge issue last week, the disabled and seniors, cuts to the hours of the library, cutting down the ice skating rink, eliminating the proposal to eliminate other issues that are for the children, and especially the libraries. You know, it's been said a long time ago, and I was a teacher for many, many years, and I believe very strongly that the library is the cornerstone of our democracy. And without our libraries, they... And it has been said in many countries that the library is the only difference between having tyrants and dictators, and God protect us all from that. I would also hope that you would consider very carefully the seniors and the disabled. When you look at libraries for the possibility of closure, you're making, many people in Huntington Beach don't have cars. Hundreds of young people do not have computers, and hundreds of homes of families and children do not have Wi-Fi. The library is their only avenue of study and research, and without that, they are absolutely lost. So you stand between a young person's education and their knowledge and how they contribute to the society as a citizen. I would just close by saying that Walter Cronkite, who is considered the most trusted man ever in American news world, said that information must be free and equally available, and libraries are where they are found.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Ada Hand. You've heard me in the past two years pleading for affordable housing. I'm here tonight to say shame, shame on you. You gave the airshow owner more than $7 million for either what was an act of God, or an act of nature, or an act of the oil company, and you got money from that. The city got a fine from that oil company. Where's that money gone to? You turn around and charge Huntington Beach residents for your fiasco of a settlement that you don't even have the guts to make public. What happened to that money? Shame, shame on you. You want to close down libraries and shut down the senior center so working older residents cannot use the fitness room and other amenities they count on to keep themselves physically and mentally healthy. And in its place, you want to hire more frigging lawyers for the city attorney. The attorney who keeps hype, giving us lawsuits and fines by the state. That's not the state's fault, that's your fault, and the attorney's fault. And oh, by the way, he wants $100,000 to renovate his offices. Give me a break. Shame, shame on you. You claimed you wanted to make the city safer and more tourist-friendly. Looks to me, these budget cuts will result in the opposite. Filthy restrooms on the beach, a reduction in security, and in park cleaning will probably disintegrate. Loss of vector control, that means rats in the parks and public places, tree limbs falling on people, overworked staff who will have to pick up work in a four-day work week and do more of that work for people you are letting go, like the retired innuents who cost you practically nothing and give the work to some staff people who are going to be overworked. Loss of services for homeless, elimination in security features like CCTV, and elimination of the call center and the city patrols. How does that help us be safe? Delaying staff that pay the bills, authorized purchase orders. This allows you to slow down so businesses cannot be paid. And then you charge the downtown businesses for services that you used to provide, and oh, now they have to pay for that as well. Shame, shame on you. Do the business that you were elected to do, eliminating homelessness, adopting a housing plan, and making Huntington Beach safer. This Friday, there will be money disappearing from the state. It's a more, the program is called MORE, and it offers money to revitalize mobile homes. That money will disappear after this Friday.
Thank you so much for your time. Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, honorable city council, hardworking city staff, and concerned-thinking citizens. My name is Ally Plum, owner of an immobile home for a decade here in Huntington Beach. In the Four Agreements, Don Miguel Ruiz writes, "The human mind is like a fertile ground where seeds are continuously being planted. The seeds are opinions, ideas, and concepts. You plant a seed in thought, and it grows. The word is like a seed, and the human mind is fertile. The only problem is that too often it is fertile for the seeds of fear." Ruiz makes the point that the mind is the objective medium, the soil, and will respond to whatever is planted. If we want tomatoes in our garden, we plant tomatoes. If we want marigolds, we plant marigolds. The soil doesn't take it upon itself to say, "I think he wanted kumquats." No, we get exactly what we plant. If we plant doubt and fear, that is what grows. If we want prosperity and abundance, that is what we will receive. Perhaps this sounds trite and overused, but it is still applicable. What are you planting in our mental gardens here in Huntington Beach? And I'm very glad to hear that there's no cuts to the library. Is that word for truth, that we're not going to cut any libraries? Yes?
Mm-hmm. I can respond.
Okay, that's great. And I would like to say, we're very sorry to see Sonny Hahn go. She was a very, very good employee. I don't know where she went.
She's right next to you. Right there.
Oh, hi, sweetie. Thank you. Anyway, thank you very much for your time. Please, please. I think sometimes we need to make sure the public is aware of what is going on, because as you can see, people get pretty irate when we don't have the exact facts and the truth. So please do your best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evenings, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tim Geddes, and I've been a resident here since 1983. I'm a parent and a homeowner with a vested interest in all city services. I live within five minutes of my children's excellent schools, especially Eder Elementary School, on Banning right beside the Banning Branch Library. My two kids, particularly my daughter, grew up loving books and reading and would patronize our libraries, especially the Banning Branch, on a regular basis. My daughter now works for, as a, in the county library system in Washington State. Families in southeast Huntington Beach depend upon the Banning Branch Library for many reasons, and we make good use of it. At the beginning of this century, I served on the city's finance board and eventually became its vice chair. I served for eight years. Twenty years ago, our city finances were in terrible shape, and many hard decisions regarding our budget had to be made. In advising the city council, we were forced to look at a broad range of services, from police helicopters to public works, from beach issues to library services. We studied community impacts on everything. We listened to what our citizenry wanted and needed. We were not guided by politics, ideology, or special interests. One thing our community demanded was a library system that served all residents, that complemented our schools, and that provided our senior population with its resources. I am pleased to hear from the mayor that there will be no, that no library cuts are being contemplated for the foreseeable future. While cutting back on library services may be appropriate for some locations, I think you, I mean, the Banning Library Branch, for example, is the poster child of our library systems, and it serves the, one of the neighborhoods farthest away. Anyway, it should not, it should not be about saving dollars and cents in the budget, but how the budget serves the community in this area. Simply, simply, it is worth the investment and should be protected. The numbers speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Sure. My name is David Reinerson, and I have some questions. First, if the settlement with Code Four is such a great deal, why is it being withheld from the public? If I negotiate a great deal, I'm happy to publicize it and talk about it. When someone tells me it's a great deal but won't let me see the details, it usually means it's a great deal for them, but not for me. Like, it's a great deal, and we're closing three libraries, cutting services and staff, and running a budget deficit. Is that your idea of transparency? So thank you to Gina Clayton Tarvin for filing suit to make the deal public. Second, why is this money coming from city coffers in the first place at all? Was there no event insurance by either the city or Code Four? And even then, why is it not coming from the $50 million settlement from Amplify Energy, who was responsible for the leak and the consequent cancellation of the airshow? Third, the valuation of the airshow to the city is at best optimistic. Counting all the revenue in the city over a three-day period and attributing that to the airshow assumes Huntington Beach is a ghost town anytime the airshow is not in town. The value should be calculated as the incremental revenue over the average for that time of year. You owe it to the residents for an accurate accounting, not a finger-in-the-air estimate. And finally, why are certain members of the city council who are happy to fight with the state through multiple lawsuits over a housing plan settling so quickly and easily with Code Four? Could it be that because Code Four is in support of their candidacy? Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Huntington Beach City Council, thank you for this opportunity for public comment tonight. My name is Joseph Wilson, and I am a concerned homeowner of our city. I stand before you today to address a matter of utmost importance that affects the very fabric of our community, the recent settlement with the airshow vendor. This settlement unfortunately has put our city's budget in dire straits, jeopardizing the future of vital services such as our libraries and community programs. It is alarming to me that the settlement to this outside vendor hasn't been made public and that it totaled over $7 million. Now, in order to pay for that settlement, it appears the city is proposing budget cuts and layoffs to community services over $7 million. Based on reporting by Voice of OC that there may be conflicts of interest surrounding the settlement, I believe it is imperative we take immediate action. The decision-making process must be transparent, accountable, and free from any personal interests that may compromise the best interests of our city and its residents. Tonight, I ask the council to take a bold and necessary step. I request that you, as representatives of our city, formally initiate an investigation into these potential conflicts of interest. We need an independent and impartial assessment to shed light on any wrongdoing. By calling for an investigation, we are demonstrating our commitment to upholding the highest standards of ethics and accountability. Furthermore, our libraries serve as centers of learning, imagination, and community engagement. These and other community services contribute to the well-being and quality of life of all residents. Closing them would have a detrimental mental impact on all of us. This impact is not being better served by spending so much of our tax dollars on one weekend's entertainment with an airshow. Moreover, if the airshow really brings in so much revenue to the city, then why are we proposing tonight's dramatic budget cuts to pay for it? In conclusion, I urge the council to take immediate action. Requesting an investigation into the potential conflicts of interest surrounding the airshow settlement is not only a moral imperative, but a legal obligation. Let us stand together as a united community, demanding transparency, fairness, and a commitment to the best interests of our city. Thank you for your attention, and I trust that you will prioritize the welfare of our city and its residents going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi there. My name is Michelle Ferry. I teach at a number of different community colleges, and I know that when we look at the budget, we always look at budget cuts and being in the hole and fiscal problems. Now, is there any possibility that we can do budget cuts that do not involve tearing out the heart of my childhood memories? Honestly, like the Banning Museum, the fact that we even talked about it, that it's on paper, it's on paper, it means it's kind of real. You know, that someone's thinking about it. The Banning Library is when me and my mom walked, because we were right, we lived right on Banning, and we'd go and we could pick out these books, and we'd learn how to read, and it was just a wonderful family kind of bonding time. And then when I went and I did my graduate work and got my doctorate, most of the writing of that damn thing came from being at the Central Library. I'm there almost every day, almost every day to do my grading, because it's a great place to work and meet my students. It's wonderful. There are, there's wonderful things there. There is tutoring, fixing stuff. If you do not have your high school degree, you can have resources to do that. It's wonderful. Now, what we do not need is our visceral fear of any books that involve LGBTQ sorts of issues. So my understanding, what you should do is this. Take your, get crazy. Take your kids, take them to the children's library and say, "Go at it, find the porn." Go through every book. You can find and read it and find your porn. And when you're done, you may not find porn, but your literacy is going to go through the roof. It's going to be great. So when we look at the budget issues, there have always been budget issues. In the early 80s, budget issue, the Great Recession, budget issue, the Great Recession, the pandemic. Remember the pandemic? We were alone, we were sad, we were lonely, and guess what we could do? We could go to the library and acquire books. And then when it opened up again, even on a Sunday, the most, the biggest time, the time where most people go to do something, that's the thing that you were even thinking of closing, Sunday? So be aware that this is a really, really important place. And if you close any...
10 seconds.
...libraries, little old ladies are going to come, see it closed, and they're going to go John Wick on you. And the worst thing they're going to do, they're going to vote.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. I'm Shammy D. I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I'm here tonight to ask, what the heck is going on with the city's finances? Seems to me the city's financial position has gone from a multimillion-dollar surplus to a multi-billion-dollar deficit, with the deficit projected to double or triple in future budgets. Why are residents only finding out about this two weeks before the budget has to be finalized? The proposed budget cuts include closing three libraries, reducing maintenance at aging facilities, infrastructure, and parks, eliminating swimming programs, cutting services for seniors, reducing security and patrols, delaying road maintenance, and even cutting back on cleaning the public restrooms at the beach. The budget should be balanced by cutting expenses that have far less impact on the city's residents. Beginning, of course, by eliminating the dramatic increase in the legal department budget, which... Which will cost the city $700,000, and also halting the 8.5 million Pacific airshow payout that we agreed to last April. Code Four's lawsuit was the one lawsuit the city should have obviously won. Which brings me back to where I started. How on earth did we get to this point? Was the council unaware of the financial problems facing the city until now? Or did they just fail to proceed with caution after we lost $10 million in legal damages? The city's most important, the city council's most important responsibility is keeping the city solvent. But instead, we have had a parade of council meetings devoted to who should give the invocation, lawsuits designed to poke the bear, pride flag, and banning books. No mention of a deficit, or these cuts to programs and services that people want and depend on. And in the interim, the council's recent actions have caused the loss of millions of dollars annually in outside funding, which must now come out of the city's own pockets. Looking forward, the next couple of years may be very difficult. This could even affect property values, for those of you who care about that. God forbid we lose even one of our lawsuits with the state, which might mean tens of millions of dollars in damages the city could never recover from. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have 10 more?
Yeah. Last call for Jaclyn Stappert-Evanson. The remaining public comments, Mary Madigan, Jean Ferrans, Russell Karp, Sue Welfringer, Ashley Dos Santos, Mike B., Kane Durham, Rob Gordon, Suzanne Hart, Russ Neal, Deborah Felice, or Felici, Mary Jacobs, Patty Pappas.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Jean Ferrans. I'm here to speak on agenda item three. The people of Huntington Beach have spoken on tonight's budget meeting in 329 pages of comments, and they are angry. I am angry. Huntington Beach residents, wake up. This budget proposal is a travesty. If adopted, it will cripple the ability of our city departments and staff to provide the services that our residents need and expect. All this budget seeks to do is eliminate, reduce, and defund. Among the proposals, three libraries closing, Central Library hours shortened, senior center Saturday eliminated, elimination of park ranger and city security services that monitor compliance for illegal encampments, homeless issues, graffiti vandalism, loitering, public smoking and drinking, and suspicious activities. Defunding... defunding of care manager affecting 18% of home delivery meal services, reduction of public work contracts and maintenance services, reductions of both the city manager's and city clerk's office totaling over $7 million. Of note is that the city attorney's office will receive no cuts, but in fact, the city attorney, Michael Gates, will be receiving an increase in funds, no doubt necessary to handle all the upcoming lawsuits against the city, or perhaps as to pay for the extra staff necessary to evaluate book obscenity in our library. Also of note, the city's $7 million settlement to Code Four operators of the Pacific Airshow, the details of which the city attorney has refused to disclose, but which is now facing judicial review under the California Public Records Act. $7 million, which is almost precisely the amount of the budget shortfall. Homeless issues, safety, protecting business interests, and promoting economic growth and tourism, all these negatively impacted by the budget reductions. Not coincidentally, all these were also election issues the city council majority campaigned on, but have now abandoned to culture, book wars, and losing lawsuits against the state. Beginning with the sudden exit of five of eight of the city's managers shortly after the election of the city council's ultra-conservative majority, with another resignation just this week to the deluge of lawsuits from Sacramento over their refusal to accept state housing mandates, to their elevation of performative personal agendas over any authentic attempt to address and resolve the real issues of the city upon which they campaigned and were presumably elected, the four have continuously ignored the wishes expressed by majority of concerned citizens, voting instead for the advancement of their own positions on agenda items as a vote last week to approve Councilwoman Vandermark's book proposal over the passionate objections of more than 220 citizens clearly illustrates. This is not responsible government, and worse, it is not representative government. So I say again, Huntington Beach citizens, wake up.
10 seconds.
It's time to ask ourselves, is Huntington Beach better or worse under this new leadership? If this budget proposal is any indication, I think the answer is clear.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, Mayor Strickland, Mayor Protem, council. With your announcement that that original budget that we were all concerned about is not the one that we're looking at, but rather it's the one being passed out. If you haven't gotten this yet, this is the one we need to speak to. I have not going to read my original comments, but I want to thank you for that and for considering the libraries and for the maintenance downtown, specifically for me personally. I want to take a minute to say what an amazing summer reading kickoff the library had this past Saturday. There were so many different cool things about it. The staff was amazing. Laura told me that our children's librarian, that there were 1,000 sign-ups for summer reading on Saturday. That was before the day was over. And last year, I think they had 1,200 over the entire year. So we're really excited. I know there were many competing events from Adventure Land or Adventure City and the dogs at the beach. I mean, there are a lot of, it was a beautiful day, and they came to the library. So we even met a family from Texas who accidentally discovered our library. They're here for the summer, and they were already there for four days in a row. So it was both our locals and tourists. It was really a lot of fun. So thank you again for providing a different budget for us to consider tonight. And I do want to say, I couldn't quite get the math right. So there were some cuts, and maybe some speakers after me can look to those. But it looked like a total cut of, I'm sorry, reduction. In the back, it says, "Community and library services came up to 476, 144." And when I did the math of adding up the potential of eliminating the ice rink and the potential of eliminating the aquatics expansion and the potential of eliminating gatearm temp salaries and the cafe, I come up a little bit shy. I come up with, and I'm not math, I'm an English teacher and a marketing person. So anyway, maybe somebody else can clarify that. But mostly, I just want to say thank you for your service and for allowing the public comments go on. And thank you also to the community who showed up last week to talk about libraries and books. And we'll be back to talk about that again. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Yes, I also want to thank the Republican, the current majority on this council for producing this document tonight. Hope you all take a good look at this document tonight. It's, I'm not an attorney, but from what I've heard, putting this out right before the vote may not be actually legal. And I'm wondering if we can look into that, perhaps, and try to clarify that before a vote is actually taken. I also have some questions, and I don't actually expect you to answer them, but perhaps these can be entered into the record in some way. The first item of $1,138,297 is the partial reprogramming of one-time revenues from Emerald Cove loan repayment. I really wonder what that is? And is there some way to get an explanation of that before a budget resolution is actually passed? So we know what is involved in this document? There's also $712,000 in employee work enhancements. When I've enhanced work, it usually costs money. So I'm curious as to how we're gonna save money by work enhancements, but maybe that's just me. There's also a number of other very interesting items on here. There's a reduced equipment replacement for $300,000. Now, what equipment, I wonder, needed to be replaced in the first place and now suddenly doesn't need to be replaced? There's another very interesting amount here. There's $1,500,000 in salary savings by continuing the managed hiring process. First introduced, just happens to be on the 17th of January of this year. Again, I wonder what is involved in that managed hiring process and how that is saving $1,500,000? Maybe it's a great program. I'd sure like to know. There's also a reduction in temporary salaries, overtime, equipment budget, in inspection services and administration of over $123,000. Again, I'm just really curious what some of these items are. And I hope we will be fully informed before a budget is voted on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Mike B. I've lived in Huntington Beach a long time and raised a family here, thanks to the opportunity to speak. I got my full three minutes last week. I'll be brief. I want to thank my fellow citizens for the detailed research that they brought forward today. And I'm continuously impressed by everyone here, by the information they bring forward. Sometimes the stuff I had, I had no idea was going on. And so, thank you for, I feel honored and proud to be a citizen here. Regarding Councilmember Vandermark's concern from last week for children's safety, not book banning exactly. I understand that that was not asked for. As one with decades of experience that I've expressed before in school, along with friends and family members, decades and decades, I can tell you from being in those hallways, in those rooms, day after day, no one is grooming anybody. If you don't, and if you want to find out, go in disguise if you have to and see for yourself. No one is grooming anybody or providing information for anybody, to anybody on anything that they weren't looking for in the first place. And I can also say that from having my twins graduate high school this year, having gone through Huntington Beach schools for 12 years, and that never came up. So I simply want to say that now there are a few books, and that's what's been addressed, and I think that's what that was all about, for people who, for a population that had previously been left out and even vilified at times. And the only people who would look for those books are people who want to know what's in them. They're not scattered about for children to read. Lastly, a lot of different opinions have been expressed in this room. And it is over and over, in ways small and large. We have different regimes, conservative, liberal. We go back and forth. We talk and we talk. And it seems we wind up in the same place. I know that, I want to speak up for the community cafe that we had in town. Once a month, we met at virtually no expense in one of the rooms in the library with the express purpose of discussing things from different political positions. Week after week, we did it respectfully. We had rules of decorum that we observed. I wish we had pushed the envelope a little harder personally, but it's just a purely good thing. And I hope the council will reconsider keeping it.
10 seconds.
Its value to me was apparent to anybody who would attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Hart. I'm still gonna address library issues. The Main Street Library was designed in the international style, which more recently is known as mid-century modern. Its site cast concrete tilt-up building method was considered unique at the time and is recognized as a classic. Even more importantly, both the library and Triangle Park are one of 122 historical properties in districts listed on the National Register of Historic Places for Orange County. As of April 13, 2013, both the library and the park were listed by the U.S. Department of the Interior with reference number of 13000152. For five years, I volunteered at the Main Street Library, and I realized how critically important it is to have this amazing walkable resource both kids and adults make within reach of our community. As a volunteer at the Main Street Library, I also had firsthand experience with dealing with out-of-towners bringing their kids in for books. Thus, the library, being in the downtown core area, is ideally located as a tourist draw. Please keep in mind that both the library and the park's existence also affect property values. My concerns are as follows. What plans would be in place for our beloved library and park? What has become of the building? Is it going to be left to deteriorate? Will you have the audacity to tear a historic building down and build a commercial complex for your campaign donors? Do you have plans to maintain what may or may not be left of the park? What are your plans for the fact that Main Street, Piccon, and Sixth Street are all single-lane streets? Are traffic and parking plans in place? While speaking with Mr. Gates online, he told me about how many hundreds of millions of dollars he has brought to our city. That therefore appears quite befuddling as to why these draconian cuts are now being contemplated. If, in fact, we are in such financial jeopardy, was it perhaps irresponsible to give Mr. Gates a $46,000-plus raise with a 3% annual retroactive to last July? Sweet deal. The city attorney of Irvine makes less and has a larger population. And now Mr. Gates is asking for three more assistant attorneys and one more paralegal? Are you anticipating even more self-inflicted lawsuits? Shame on you for considering decimating the city in which I've loved, worked, and lived for 50 years.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jacobs. And I actually have a very easy question. I would like to get an update on the Car Park park development. We had a beginning meeting, and I have not heard anything since that time. And I did attempt, and I hope I did successfully, get on an email list to hear any updates. I'm looking forward to finding out what's going on with Car Park. I'm also interested because I see that there's going to be a large cut in park funding. I see that it's going to go down to the lowest it's been since before 2019, 2020. I see that from last year, it's decreased by 80% over $5 million. And I'm wondering what is going on with these? And how is the Car Park development going to be actually successfully going forward if these cuts do go into place? And coincidentally, I could say the same thing about the library capital expenditures, which are reduced by $5 million and also going to be the lowest since before the 2019-2020 budget. Anyway, I look forward to hearing about Car Park, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here.
Excuse me. Ms. Jacobs, can you fold a blue card, please?
So staff can get back to you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers and staff. I, 43 years, lived in Huntington, was a college professor and a high school professor. And just a personal story, I mean, there's never enough money. There's never enough money. In my last few years of teaching, I was watching our state of California government borrow from our state teachers' retirement system. And we paid for that. There is no social security. We paid for our own retirement. So there's never enough money. And then I remember at the very beginning when we had the new council altogether, that Councilman Burns was looking at the budget. He's, "What's going on? I don't see it. It's not working." The reality is, is we are, the reality is, I appreciate you, all of you, that you're gonna look to see what we need to do to make change so we can get things in order, so we don't have to keep cutting. This is the only place, our city council, that's even talking about saving money or even bringing in money. So I just appreciate, I appreciated the H item, the H item that you brought and Councilman Casey brought, sorry. And we just need to work, you're doing really hard work. And you're trying to fix things that have been broken for a long time. So I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Strickland and councilmembers. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. As to the budget, I know that nobody wants anything to be cut, but I would point out that former State Senator Morlock has ranking of Huntington Beach as the 30th out of 34 cities in Orange County with an unrestricted net position, which is basically our net worth, of a negative $1,132 per capita. And the state auditor's ranking of us is the 20th percentile statewide, largely due to future pension costs. So you have not inherited a great situation, and you truly have your work cut out for you, and I don't envy you that task. Second, last Tuesday evening, we saw the longstanding smear campaign against Mayor Protem Vandermark by certain individuals escalate into a much more dangerous situation reminiscent of forming a lynch mob. We saw over 100 people, all wearing the same sticker, all using the same false narrative, accusing her of wanting to ban books, accusing her of wanting to destroy our library, linking this to the book-burning of Nazi Germany, and repeating the completely unsubstantiated, if not clinically insane, charge of antisemitism. None of these, none of these people, none of these people appeared the least amenable to reason. I personally went from being merely incensed with the character assassination of this wonderful, kind, courageous woman to being concerned for her physical safety. There is such a thing as incitement, and there is such a thing as stochastic violence. I asked the city council, the police department... I asked the city council, the police department, and those participating in these attacks to recognize the danger being created and to take steps to head it off. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you for having me. My name is Russell Karp. I'm an HB resident for more than 13 years. I'd like to speak to the proposed budget plan cuts and additions. First, and it's a minor item, is the plan to cut the rideshare service circuit. This is a service that is of clear value to the residents. I use it four to six times a week. As a senior citizen on a fixed income, this service gives me the opportunity to go to local businesses at reasonable cost. It's a great service. People who use this service frequent many businesses around the city. We spend money, creates tax revenue. Have you considered the tax loss revenue by eliminating this service? It also provides a safe and environmentally friendly way to get around, encourages people not to drink and drive, along with employing a group of good local people. I urge you to find other cuts. Next is the elimination of three libraries. This is not where cuts should be. The cost might be $166,000 a year, but you're proposing adding a number of new positions to the city, including four new attorneys in the city attorney's office. Our city attorney already makes more money than the Attorney General of the United States. I think, I think his office is a bit larger than yours. Okay? The reason he needs more help is because of the lawsuits your action has caused, has created, the fraudulent four. Gracie, Gracie Vandermark, you claim to be a supporter of public education. You only support an ideology. You're promoting an uneducated, uneducated positions. How does closing libraries help our students? It doesn't. Next, Mayor Strickland, your actions have made Huntington Beach the laughingstock of every other city in Orange County. You're the puppet master with three puppets bowing at your feet. Casey McKeon, you proclaim to be a developer and real estate tycoon. At least once every meeting, you comment that we campaigned on fiscal responsibility. Adding new management positions, more attorneys is not saving the city money. You only want to get deeper pockets at the expense of the good citizens of this city. And Pat Burns, I'm really not quite sure why you're here, other than, other than maybe to mop up after the other Three Stooges that you ran with. You should all be ashamed of your actions. We thought T. Dora Tease was the worst possible city council person. You guys pay, make him pale in comparison. I spoke with more than a dozen city employees over the last few weeks, from top managers to street maintenance crews to police and firefighters. We're losing them, one at a time. Every one of them is looking for work elsewhere. Don't worry about budget cut, guys. Soon you won't have any employees to pay.
Time.
Thank you.
Next, next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, city council members. My name's Deborah Felice. I live at 511 Seventh Street. I love Huntington Beach, but wanted to express my feelings about a few of the areas in HB that caused me duress. Homeless on the streets, homeless camping on the beach, homeless living in their cars, trash in parks, near and far. Jet noise and pollution all around, Hawaiian air at 1,300 feet over downtown. People driving around casing people's houses, regular break-ins, package thefts, stolen cars, stolen catalytic converters, illegal Airbnb's. These are not swell, resulting in a loss of revenue for our hotels. Turning quiet, single-family neighborhoods into all-night party zones, taking away potential housing for full-time beach buyers or those that rent, since many of these Airbnb's are owned by non-HB residents. Fractional ownership, an issue that is so unaddressed in the city that most of you don't even know what the term means. For assistance on this, I suggest you call your friends in Newport. People that can't seem to park parallel along the curb, instead they park in their drive apron and stick out onto the street, creating a very hazardous condition indeed. Paying way too much money to your airshow friend, paying for an environmental review that costs half a million bucks by the end. And one finally, and finally one item I really don't like, the newest scourge of safety, electric bikes galore. Groups of them running stop signs, speeding two or three aboard. Many riders too young to even be in a motorized vehicle on a public street here, people riding them, drinking beer. Police don't stop them, the parents don't care, the boardwalk is no safer, they ride them everywhere. They ride them on the sidewalk, they ride them while on the, on the phone they talk, they ride them at night, they ride them without a light. They pretty much break the rules without care all the time. I knew at some point this would get into a Dr. Seuss type of rhyme. In summary, I hope my point has not been missed. Of all the problems in this city, freaking out about rainbow flags and library books did not make my list.
Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Mary. I'm an HB resident and very proud to be an HB resident. I love it here. I originally came out to talk about your proposed budget cuts to our libraries and I'm happy to hear that that's not going to be the case. So I'm going to move on to my next issue. I am also concerned about the budget cut of Circuit. I want to support and encourage, you know, using the service in Huntington Beach. And I know my neighbors also love Circuit. We use it regularly and consider it an extremely valuable service for downtown Huntington Beach. We routinely utilize Circuit to visit restaurants and shops, both personally and when we have guests visiting from other areas of Orange County and beyond. We find Circuit to be valuable for guests with mobility challenges especially, which is nice. They would love to visit downtown, but struggle with walking their, you know, downtown area. The Circuit service allows us to regularly frequent local businesses. Without it, we would be more likely to, we wouldn't spend money downtown as much as we would, you know, using Circuit. We go downtown, we spend money. Without Circuit, you would be less money, obviously, spent down there. We understand that there is a cost to the city for Circuit, but we think the cost is well worth it and implore the city to work with Circuit to ensure the service continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Paul Simons with Kirk Pringle and Associates. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of my client, Circuit. I didn't know she was going to speak right now, so that was nice. Anyway, you know, I am so proud to have been able to bring this service to the city. I love the city, I live in the city, and it's been awesome to see Circuit operate in downtown. We do realize there are difficult decisions that need to be made from a budget standpoint, but I wanted to talk a little bit about what Circuit is and what they've done. To date, we have moved more than 165,000 people in and around downtown, majority of them dropping right in the heart of Main Street. Let's break that down a little bit. That equates to 274,000 vehicle miles traveled. And since we are all-electric, we've saved more than 17,000 gallons of gasoline. Further, we, further, we boast a 4.96 user rating, that's 4.96 out of 5. Yes, the city has funded a little more than two-thirds of the service with Circuit making up the balance. Last year, that cost the city roughly $350,000. We have made a commitment to the city to help reduce those costs. And staff is going to talk a little bit about, a little bit more about that later on. However, I can share with you now that we recently secured a grant from the Air Quality Air AQMD. And that takes $350,000 that the city had paid last year, down to $160,000. Additionally, additionally, there are pots of money at OCTA that have been awarded to the city of Huntington Beach that have never been utilized. Those dollars are for projects just like this. Those are old dollars and there are new dollars that are going to be available this coming year. Additionally, I understand that there are dollars set aside in the state budget specifically for Circuit, specifically for Huntington Beach. I understand that there are tough decisions to be made. There are certain programs and services in and around the city that are a drain on the budget. But when you think about Circuit, I'd like you to think about that as an investment. Of the 165,000 trips, the lion's share of them drop right in the middle of downtown, right in the middle of Main Street. Those are people who are spending money at bars, at restaurants, and at shops. This is not something you want to take away as it relates to budget issues and fiscal responsibility, in my opinion. All that being said, we disrespectfully request that this city council take action to secure Circuit moving forward. And it's our commitment to the city to continue to find other ways to help fund this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name's Ashley Dos Santos. And I'm here representing the families, kids, and parents of southeast Huntington Beach. I, you know, rushed, left work and rushed over here with my kids because I didn't have a sitter, because my phone started binging, binging, binging. For parents out there, you know, like the parent groups, I'm a Girl Scout troop leader and, you know, coach soccer and work at the Eater Elementary. And so everyone's very worried and concerned about the library. But no one could really get here. And so I came here and my daughter, who's sitting back here, she also was like, Mom, what's going on? What, what's everyone saying? And so she's like, we have to go, we have to go. And so although I appreciate this new budget and that the libraries aren't closing, I felt like it was important for my daughter here to show her kind of the democratic process and how everyone has their voice heard. And as we're just sitting back there waiting, she, you know, had this new budget and she's doodling. She's just graduated kindergarten, so she's just learning how to write. And it says, "Save libraries because it's next to my school." Please, you know, on the word it says number, it says no on closing libraries. So thank you guys for doing the work to take that cut off. And I hope it's not considered again and that you listen to the expert staff members that help you and you listen to your conscience, thinking about our kids. Also, back to the, the libraries and all the, just reflecting on what everyone's saying here, thinking about the, the investment in time we're putting into advising libraries into what books they should have, seems absurd to me when there's other things we can spend money on. And those of you that are considering investing and re-looking at all of our books and stepping in front of the amazing librarians and committees that are formed to do just that, I send you love and peace and healing because clearly there's a lot of fear happening within you. And I hope that you can stop being driven by fear and accept all the colors of our kids and who they are and aren't so scared for them because they're amazing future leaders and we can, you know, trust the experts in the field and our kids to be themselves. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Is that it?
Okay, no. Last call for Kane Durham and Rob Gordon. And the final speakers, Rick Brown, Kathy McGuire, and Valentina Bankhead. Please come down and approach both podiums. Thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Kathy McGuire and I have lived in Huntington Beach for over 30 years. I want to thank all of you for your service to Huntington Beach by serving on the city council. I really appreciate the hours you put into working for our city. My remarks relate to the city council meeting last Tuesday and to divisiveness in our city. Kudos to my, the poet that went first, but I would like to read a poem that I wrote to you. It's called "Mosaic." A glass mosaic is fashioned from broken bits of glass, dishes, bottles, arranged in a pleasing pattern or forming a specific design. But it's only pieces of glass until it is grouted, filling in all of the strange, irregular spaces between the pieces to form a whole. Love is grout. A stained glass window is fashioned from precisely cut pieces of colored glass arranged to create a light-filled picture. But the pieces of glass will not stay together until they are bonded using lead, flux, and solder, heated to remove impurities, and melted to fill in the separating gaps. Love is purified solder. Love isn't only an emotion, it's impossible to even like everyone with their jagged edges and unpredictable curves. Love is also an attitude of inclusive enveloping, accepting that sharp shards and strange shapes exist and knowing that they are part of the design. Love bonds the mosaic together. Love allows the lighted pattern to exist. Love creates unity from discord. Love is three-dimensional grout. And I hope that we all treat each other with kindness and acceptance because we are all part of the mosaic of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hello, my name is Perry Clither. I filled out the wrong form and I'm sorry for that. It's the green one. Let me see. I've heard from others tonight that Mr. Gates's office has seen their budget increase by 700,000. I'll be honest, I haven't had the chance to review the budget, so I don't know for sure that that's true. But if it does, it disturbs me a little bit. I see that you've spent, I've watched a lot these last few years that you've been fighting these states' affordable housing mandates. And I know that many of you on the council, and you as well, Mr. Gates, ran to do something about homeless. And you guys offered a lot of solutions on how to solve the housing crisis. Since 1990, since 1997, the real cost of housing has increased 300%, according to the Case Shiller Index. And economists who've studied this issue have determined that one of the big causes of this is local regulations that stifle the supply of new housing and construction. California's housing mandates are designed to solve this issue. As a state, we're embracing the free market, cutting red tape and bureaucracy and letting builders build. We're a free-market economy. That's what makes us strong. Why on this issue are we resisting the free market so, so badly when it's, when this red tape is clearly causing so much damage? By doing it together as a state, no single city has to suffer the effects of letting the free market and all these builders come in all at once. We all do it together, it's not going to be that bad. It spreads out all the new construction all over the state. Doing this is selfish. It's, it's just plain selfish. We got to embrace the free market in this way to reduce housing costs, reduce homelessness. It improves our economic freedom. It will improve our tax revenues as well, which will help us avoid deficits and fund our cities, our cities' services. Mr. Gates, some fights are worth fighting even when you lose. Some fights are, you can win some fights even when they're wrong. This one is worthless and doomed all at the same time. What's going on?
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, city council members. Want to talk a little about the airshow. I was sitting in my seat and I can't stand sitting there listening to people complain about the airshow. Listen, over the next six years, they're going to advertise those payments. If you multiply the $120 million this city generates from that airshow, that's $720 million. And we're talking about budget shortfalls and we're trying to get rid of something that generates a one hell of a lot of money for the city and for surrounding communities. Now, the other thing I'm really frustrated about is the fact that our four new city council members are always being labeled as racist and things of that nature. So I'm going to give you a little bit of history right now of the United States. In 1830, President Andrew Jackson was the President of the United States. He moved the native Indians from their native lands to reservations they called Trailers Tears. Thousands died. He's a Democrat. 1860, 1860. 1860, there's 4 million slaves in the United States, not, 98% were owned by Democrats, not Republicans. 1960, 1863, Abraham Lincoln was a Republican. He had the Emancipation Proclamation to free the slaves. By 1865, 620,000 Americans died in the Civil War, 360,000 were Union soldiers to flee the slaves. In 1867, Nathan Bedford Forrest, a Confederate general, Democrat, started the KKK, not a Republican, a Democrat. In 1868, the Jim Co laws were started in the, in the South. In the South, for 100 years until 1970, we had, we had segregation in the South, Democrats, not a Republican. 1915, President Andrew Wilson, Woodrow Wilson, had the Birth of a Nation played in the White House. That was a KKK movie, Democrat, not a Republican. In 1941, Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor, FDR had the Japanese-Americans in May 1942 put in intern cans, not a Republican, a Democrat. In 1965, President Johnson had the Civil Rights Act. The Republicans as a body passed it, the Democrats were pushing against it. It was Nixon that actually passed it in the next administration. And then from 1960s until, until present days, anywhere in the United States where you see a huge problem with murders and you have issues with, with terrible ghettos, it's Democratic governors, mayors, and city council members. So I'm tired about who's the racist in the United States, Republicans are not racist in the United States. These are labels that are thrown out when you lose the academic debate. And these, these four members, our four new members, the council members, are standing up for Huntington Beach. And you guys are labeling them and they inherited this budget where you have shortfalls and they're going to fix it. That's all.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Valentina Bankhead, HB resident. Huntington Beach residents need our city council to be accurate and Huntington Beach residents need our city council to be accurate and cautious with HB funds. The council previous, including three sitting Democrats, seem to think we are a credit card and an ATM machine. The responsibility now lies on our newly-elected Fab Four in conjunction with Three that will most likely push for their electric toys, like the city electrical police car. All the while, our police on regular vehicles need normal maintenance and equipment. On that note, Circuit Project is a financial nightmare. $1 million that was set for this trial run now has a shortcoming of $450,000. But why, ask? Because the council moved money around from their precious Circuit Pet Project to the other Debbie Downer project, the Circus Tent on Beach, the navigation center, which is already getting funded by HB taxpayers and a monthly and yearly debt in part from the Mercy House that is bleeding us dry. Now, the HDD debacle. There has been so much mismanagement of funds from the past several years, it's disgusting. $450 million to $500 million, we will be busting our buns to make over multiple years from a rat-moved joint powers agreement through the precious Lefty Council in conjunction with Oliver Chi. Eric Peterson was the only sane person on council at the time to say no and to stop this madness. I understand that a joint powers agreement is hard to undo, so I guess we can just live with this debt. Some who are here in the audience tonight think $400 million and $500 million is awesome. Maybe they can take a vote and have those individuals take the toll on that bill since they think it is so acceptable and sound. They like living large on a credit card unless it's their own credit card. In all truth, please do what you can now to direct the funds we have and funds we will be getting in the coming time, used appropriately, and put it towards most important needed entities for our city to stay above water. Well, with water parks and beaches in high regard, we need finances to be diverted to the offices that are most crucial that handle those issues. Maintenance and infrastructure as our main concern. Also, if you can drop some money for tissue boxes for some of the audience members that need to dry their eyes. And for comfort, make them lotion-soft tissues. I truly trust you will do the best for Huntington Beach. I can only hope that you all move this city forward with compromise and for the best benefit to the residents and businesses and city workers. We need to be financially sound, and that sometimes requires cutbacks. Do the best for us, we trust your best efforts. And for your information, I support the city attorney's office and what they need as well, as well as the airshow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Strickland, my name is Connie Boardman. I'm a former mayor and council member and have been on the council during times of economic downturns and reduced revenue to the city resulting in the need for the council to address revenue opportunities as well as cuts. We tried to avoid cuts that would directly affect the quality of life of our residents. However, what I saw in the proposed cuts listed in the published agenda that was available for the public to actually review before the meeting was a number of cuts that would directly affect our quality of life. Based on the attendance at the last meeting, I think the new council majority has a better understanding of how much this community values our libraries and librarians. We also value our beaches and parks and the fact that they're safe, clean, and well-maintained. So, in the two-page revised plan passed out minutes ago that the public has not had an adequate amount of time to review, it still appears community services and library services will be in for about a half a million dollars in cuts, although that's not really clear because it's listed under department reductions and revenue opportunities, like they're clumped together. And there's a number 476,144 dollars. Are those cuts? I'm assuming they're cuts. But no cuts to the city attorney's office. Is the city attorney's office still slated to receive a new deputy community prosecutor, which will cost $162,000 a year? Two new senior deputy city attorneys for $408,000? A senior legal assistant position for $117,000? When you add up these costs, it comes to $687,000. That's more than being saved by cutting community and library services, $467,000, almost a half a million. Oh, and we can't forget the raise the new majority gave the city county attorney in December that makes him the third-highest-paid city attorney in the state. You know, I was talking with council member Kalmick over the weekend and we were talking about the library issues, and he suggested to me that we have the city attorney cut his new employee positions and use that money to keep the libraries open. Now, I think, I thought that was a great idea, by the way, but now I think these positions could be used to prevent the cuts in community service and library services. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
That concludes public comments.
Great. Members, now let's move down to the agenda. Council committee appointment announcements. Does any council member have any announcements? Seeing none, moving on. AB 1234 reporting. Any member have anything to report? Seeing none, moving on. Openness and negotiation disclosures. Does any member have anything to disclose? Seeing none, moving forward. Consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull an item on the consent calendar? If not, do I hear a motion and second?
So moved.
It's been moved, been seconded. Clerk call the role on the consent calendar. And please announce for the public what's on the consent calendar.
All right. So on the consent calendar is the one item for a resolution that appoints Mark Alvarado as interim chief financial officer. Moved by Kalmick, seconded Burns. Please vote. Council member Kalmick.
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes.
Burns. Seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So, members, I'm going down to file on three, public hearing. I need to read this out loud. As a reminder, the public hearing was continued and remained open from June 20th meeting. Does anyone have any ex parte communication disclosed on item three? Seeing none. The staff at this time, please introduce your report. Council members? Do you have a, the, yeah, yeah, staff at this time, please introduce your report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Tonight, we'll be presenting the fiscal year 2324 budget for adoption. So we'll be providing a brief overview of the proposed 2324 general fund budget review, the proposed 2324 capital improvement budget, the 2324 budget approval actions, as well as the budget balancing plan. So I'll go over these slides just very quickly, just because much of this information was provided before.
Hey, Sunny, real quick.
Yes.
Because there were some questions. Can you kind of walk the community through, you know, how budgets are forward-looking based on projected revenues, recurring revenues, recurring expenses, and not necessarily focused on one-time expenditures, like settlements, or one-time revenues, like lawsuit winnings that, you know, Gates brought in this year with $30 million, but kind of focused on, you know, recurring revenues and recurring expenses?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Of course. So, so our proposed 2324 general fund budget is structurally balanced. And so what structurally balanced means is that we do have recurring revenues to support recurring expenditures such as salaries, contracts, and the like. So when we're developing our budgets in future years, we also ensure that where one-time revenues are only being used for one-time costs, such as one-time consulting fees, one-time projects, and things like that. But when looking in out years, we do want to make sure that we are, we have sufficient recurring revenues in order to meet our ongoing expenses. So with that, we do have a planned use of reserves in the upcoming fiscal year that's being proposed. And so that is $4.9 million from AES settlement funds, and that will be for projects dedicated to the southeast area, which our city engineer, Tom Herbell, will be going over in further detail in another slide.
Sunny, the audience is saying they can't hear you.
They can't see it. They can't see?
You can't see on the big screen?
Right there. I apologize. Sorry about that. I still have, I'm slightly, I'm recovering from a cold, and so I've
No problem.
Been losing my voice, so I apologize. I will speak louder. So I can start from the beginning. So our proposed fiscal year 2324 general fund budget is structurally balanced. So what structurally balanced means, rather than just, you know, just being balanced, is that we have sufficient recurring revenues in the fiscal year to meet our recurring expenditures such as our personnel costs, as well as our operating costs, including contracts, maintenance, and things like that. Within the current proposed fiscal year 2324 budget, we do have a planned use of reserves of $8.8 million, which includes $4.9 million from the AES MOU, which will be transferred to a separate fund to be used for projects solely in the southeast area. Our city engineer, Tom Herbell, will be going over the full list of projects that the AES funds will be used for in a future slide. So additionally, we do, we're also proposing $3.9 million in equipment reserves that we'll be using because we do want to get ahead of supply chain issues related to a number of our essential equipment needs such as vehicles. There are a number of delays and cancellations that we've been receiving for our public safety vehicles, our public works vehicles, and so we want to be proactive by strategically using our equipment reserves to make sure that, you know, of course, all of our workers have the essential equipment they need in order to do their job. You know, additionally, by doing, by being proactive, we'll also be able to avoid increased maintenance costs, maintenance costs for aged vehicles where, you know, in some cases, replacement parts are not necessarily available or cost significantly more just because they are no longer available or in very limited supply. So then additionally, we do have the use of one-time reserves of close to $2.3 million. And so that is related to the Emerald Cove settlement, settlement that was received from the Department of Finance.
Sunny, can you explain what that is? The one gentleman had a question about what that Emerald Cove settlement is.
Absolutely. So in the court case that was referenced by city attorney Gates, our first portion was a $6.8 million settlement that was received for an Emerald Cove bond that was first established in 2010. So with that, there has been numerous back and forth with the Department of Finance to see if, in order to try and get that listed as an enforceable obligation. An enforceable obligation is something where the Department of Finance basically approves it as an allowable expenditure and provides tax increment revenues to the city in order to pay for our ongoing obligations. So this was denied a number of times. However, it was most recently, based on the court order that was approved last year, we were able to list this on our most recent recognized obligation payment schedule, and it was approved for payment in our 2324 ROPS. We did, the DOF did approve the full $6.8 million of Emerald Cove money, so the loan was, will be slated to be repaid in full in fiscal year, in the upcoming fiscal year 2324. However, this money is being split between both the general fund and the low and moderate income housing fund. So roughly a third of the money will be allocated to the general fund, and the remainder is set aside for low and moderate income housing. That allocation was actually provided based on the source of funding with which the original bond repayments were made.
So just to clarify, the city attorney's office, who has been much criticized tonight, brought home $6.8 million back to our city. Is that correct?
So that was, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So just on that one, I know there's more that lawsuits he's won this year, but brought back $6.8 million.
So on that note, Sunny, my understanding is that $25 million that Michael Gates wants is in budget year plus two, correct?
It will be in budget year plus two.
And by your calculations, you believe it'll be around $8 million a year for like three years?
Correct.
At least, minimum?
Yes.
And total would be about $32 million after interest?
$31 to $32 million.
So Michael Gates wants about $31, $32 million? Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Sunny. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're not in a deficit. I announced that earlier.
So
Look, it's a surplus.
Can we let staff finish their presentation, please? Mr. Mayor?
So one thing just to note, just to reiterate regarding the, regarding the budget, as I mentioned previously, a structurally balanced budget does include, does mean that we do have sufficient recurring revenues to meet our ongoing expenses. So of course, the waterfront loan, while being a substantial amount of money that we will receive in future years, is also really considered one-time money because it's only available for roughly slightly over three years, and it's not considered to be an ongoing source of funding. So with that, you know, we couldn't necessarily plan to use that money for ongoing costs such as personnel or ongoing programs and initiatives. So with that, so that said, for the portion of the Emerald Cove money that is being allocated to the general fund, which is approximately $2.3 million, and that's listed in the one-time revenues line on this slide, it's the second line. So 50% of that will be transferred to the general liabilities fund, and our original proposal did have staff recommending that the other 50% would be transferred to the city's Section 115 trust. We are proposing an alternate use of the 50%, which, of the remaining 50% that would be originally transferred to the Section 115 trust, that would be reprogrammed to be used for other one-time costs. And so that will be addressed in further detail when we go over the budget balancing slide. So with that, the ongoing costs that we do have are, you know, personnel, operating, and most of our non-operating costs, which do include things such as debt service, capital expenditures, and transfers.
Wait, Sunny, go back. Sorry. So can you just give them the bottom line on the surplus?
Of course. So this slide does include, so this slide is updated to include the impacts of the parking revenues and the fees that were approved by city council in May. And then there were also, this also includes the POA contract that was approved as well. So includes year one of the POA contract. And with that, with all of those costs, we will have a planned surplus of $1.6 million or $1.7 million. A surplus of $1.7 million.
Continue. Thank you.
Thank you. So this just provides a brief break, a quick breakdown of the city's largest revenue source, of the city's revenue sources. So as you can see, of the $283.1 million, property tax does make up the largest chunk of our revenues at 36.8%. And we also have sales tax as well, which is 18.9. And then there are, you know, you can also see TOT, utility users' tax, use of money and property, and charges for current services. So then we also have the general fund proposed expenditures, and we have it broken out in two separate ways. So one is by category. So personnel is our largest expense in the general fund at 64.2%, operating at 19%, debt service excluding our pension obligation bonds at 2.1%, and then transfers to other funds for things such as equipment and infrastructure at 14.7%. We also have this information broken out by department, and so we do have police at 30.7%, public works at 8.3%, and then we also have fire at 19.5%. So some, those are, of course, some of our largest departments. We also have non-departmental, and that category does include costs that can't necessarily be allocated to a specific department, such as utilities, and also transfers to other funds for infrastructure and equipment replacement, just as an example. So included in this evening's, in this evening's proposed budget are 11 new general fund positions that are being proposed, which does include four new positions in the city attorney's office. So there's one deputy community prosecutor, two senior deputy city attorneys, as well as one senior legal assistant. Additionally, in the city clerks' department, we are requesting approval for the addition of one municipal records manager in order to facilitate centralization of record-keeping.
Sunny, I know we talked about letting you do the presentation, but I think it's more, makes more sense to kind of ask questions throughout it so people can, you know, in real time. So, Mr. Gates, I know we had talked about it before, about you potentially contracting out two of these positions, do you still think that's a possibility?
Yeah, it's part of our plan to put the prosecutor on contract and also the senior legal assistant on contract, so two of the four.
And then what was your full max staff position since you've been elected at one, at one point, what was your full staffing level, number?
So when I came in, it was 15 positions. And a couple years after, we went down to 11.
Okay. So this will put you...
Spent at 11.
Okay, got it. So actually, this is below the high watermark, thank you.
City Attorney's Office, so I want to make sure I understand, so you would keep the two deputy assistant, senior deputy assistant FTEs?
Yeah, so just to explain further for some more context, the two that you're referring to, that is not among the prosecutor or the support staff, but the two other senior deputies, one is for litigation and one is for municipal law. So we have divisions in the office, we have a litigation division, and then we have a municipal law that supports the departments and deals with government law, land use, things like that. So it's one position for each of those divisions.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So when all of the department heads went through this process of trying to come back with potential changes or cuts, is there a reason that what you were just talking about wasn't included?
The reason that I'm, what do you mean?
Your four were still included in there, so I'm just curious why they weren't removed before or changed or altered like you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's been brought up at previous council meetings as well, and...
Right, but in this proposal that everybody received, it wasn't?
Yeah, because our legal needs require those positions. And I mean, the thing is, is council cannot approve those, but the legal needs are what they are. So the alternative is to outsource it at the, to the tune of $300 to $600 per hour for an outside law firm to help us. So the legal work is there, we have to do it anyway. This is the cheaper alternative. If we went to an outside law firm, it would cost well over $2 million a year to get these resources outside. So this is the cheaper alternative. I didn't create the legal work, it is what it is, and so we have to tackle it either in-house or with an outside law firm. The outside law firm is nearly three times as much as the in-house cost.
Well, the level of work that you have fluctuates, I would imagine. So if you had an outside or contract law firm, at least you would be able to hire them when you needed to and then not use them when you didn't need to, whereas if we're taking on FTEs, you don't want to take somebody on and then lay them off two, two years later, so I just want to...
Well, and that's, I mean, that's a judgment call by council, city council, that has been a topic of discussion in previous meetings, and if the council wants to actually increase the number and give me a budget for $2 million per year for outside counsel, sure, we can turn off the valve when, you know, if, if we get to that point. But based on the legal needs that we have seen in the increase, this is a pretty, actually conservative estimate.
If I might ask a question of the council, if we went to that option, if the council went outside counsel, and outside counsel won a contract like you just did for $32 million, would they have contingency on that $32 million?
Contingency is usually about 35 to 40%. So yeah.
So what's the number on the $25 million that you won with 32?
Twelve to 13 million dollars.
So we would be out as a city about 13 million?
It would have gone to the law firm.
That's what I thought.
Do we pay by contingency or by the hour? Because do we usually do things on a contingency?
No, I just said, no, I just said if we went to the option of outside.
Hypothetically, hypothetically, if that case was structured on a contingency, it would have been 35 to 40.
Well, the question of whether it would be structured on a contingency is a different question, because I think we typically do it by the hour. It would have to be some unusual justification, but we'll just leave it, we'll just, that's a discussion for another day.
No, I think, it's fine, I think the public deserves to know. On plaintiff's cases where the city is suing, normally, meaning nine out of 10 or greater, the attorneys will only do it on contingency. And in a case like this, where, you know, potentially $80 million was at stake, and in this case, there was $32 million was at stake, the attorneys necessarily, they absolutely would have gone on contingency.
That's what I thought. Okay, do we have...
So I've asked multiple times for hours, you've asked for, you said there's an increase in your needs, but I have not seen any documentation to back that up. I asked at our last meeting for the year-over-year increases in the community prosecutor, for instance, to find out how that caseload is increased to justify the request for this, and the same thing for legal services. Like, I'm assuming you guys have some sort of time tracking, and so I'd asked to see it. It's not that I don't believe you, I just, I'd really like to have the data to back it up so that in five years, we're coming back and you can say, oh, look, there was a huge increase in hourly bill, or billable hours within the attorney's office to document this. And now, it's just, I mean, again, I think Councilmember Moser asked the question about, you know, the needs here, but then also, like, where's, where's the documentation?
Okay, well, first of all, the, with regard to the prosecutor and the trending data, we can certainly get you that, that had nothing to do with the budget, that was just at the prosecutor presentation that I gave at the last meeting. With regard to backup for justifying the positions, I have mentioned repeatedly what the needs are of the office. Our attorneys are working 60 hours a week, and they are working weekends, and we have been for well over a year. It's been an ongoing conversation with the previous council and the current council that our attorney staff is way overworked, that's nothing new. I don't know how you want me to document the hours except to say, I could bring in every one of my attorneys and they can tell you that they work 60-plus hours a week, and they give up their weekends when most of you are enjoying yours, and so...
Mr. Gates, Mr. Gates, that's, let's...
Is that unreasonable?
That's not unreasonable. The tone by which you're, I asked a question twice.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I continue to, can I continue to provide my answer?
Please.
Without interruption? Thank you.
Please, and then I'll let the council members follow up.
It is, it is absolutely non-unreasonable to provide one more prosecutor, one more municipal law expert attorney, one more litigation specialist, and one more support staff, considering the demands that are on our office and the work that we have. This is a recommendation to meet the needs of the office. If council doesn't want to approve these positions, fine, by all means, but you're going to have to give me $2 million or more to outsource the work. It just is what it is, I can't make the work go away, and I didn't ask for these lawsuits to be filed, the ones that we're defending. So, I mean, it is what it is.
Well, I mean, I asked you, one big one, but, so Councilman Burns.
The two that you're willing to give up, pardon me? Yeah, but the one you're talking about contracting, if you hired them though, would the contract override $279,000, you think? Would you contract out for more than $279,000 is what the cost of those two would be, that you're willing to give up?
Yeah, there, so you mean if we, I guess I don't understand your question.
Well, there's 162 that you're willing to say you'll contract out, and then 117 you're willing to contract out.
I know what the number, the delta is.
Would they, would contracting be higher than that, or do you think it would be lower in estimate?
No, it would be, contracting those would be cheaper. And I would look to, for support on that from finance, but it's my understanding that on contracts, it's cheaper. I don't have that quantified.
Anything more on the city attorney's budget? Okay, Sunny, please continue, thank you.
So then next, in the city manager's office, we're also recommending one graphic designer to assist with citywide public information materials in the Office of Communications, as well as the city's cable 3 channel, one multimedia officer to oversee operations of the city's cable 3 channel, YouTube channel, and other social media content. And so adding these positions and bringing, and bringing a portion of these contract services in-house would allow more flexibility in the Office of Communications. Additionally, in the 2324 budget, there is also an additional $100,000 that is included in the proposed budget for expanded public outreach, including the mayor's initiatives such as our town halls. So then in the community development department, we are also recommending the addition of two combination inspectors in order to mitigate backlog, provide more timely expenditures, and then bring a portion of the work that's currently being contracted out, which would result in annual savings of almost $133,000. We're also recommending the addition of one plan check engineer in order to meet the increased demand for plan check services, as well as to also bring a portion of the work that is currently being contracted out in-house as well, for annual savings of $79,000. And then in human resources, we are also requesting the addition of one HR analyst in the risk management division to support our increased workload, mitigate risk, and to also take an active role in reducing our workers' comp liabilities in general fund, in general liabilities. So then next, staff is also recommending a revision to our general fund reserve policy. So, just as a refresher, so with the city's commitment to financial prudence, we are desire, we do desire to maintain a prudent level of reserves, just kind of based on, you know, the revenue impacts that had been discussed at previous meetings, as well as our desire to maintain our strong bond ratings, including our AAA Fitch rating that we first achieved in 2014 and have continued to maintain ever since. So the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, recommends a minimum of two months of operating expenditures to be set aside in a rainy day fund for unforeseen events. So with that, in order to meet that two-month requirement, staff is recommending that certain general fund assignments in the, be consolidated into the economic uncertainties or rainy day fund in order to meet that reserve requirement. So the five fund balance assignments that we're recommending for consolidation are the city view replacement, our triple flip, strategic initiatives, housing agreement, and year-end fund value. So if we consolidate these five assignments, that total $21.3 million, and add it to our economic uncertainties reserve balance, which is currently at $26 million, then we would be able to achieve our two-month reserve requirement per GFOA recommendation. So then we're also proposing the following additional adjustments to the reserve policy, which would be that a minimum of 25% of unrestricted one-time revenues be transferred into the city's Section 115 trust for future unfunded pension costs. And then additionally, we are also recommending that the city strengthen its reserve policy by ensuring that funds are set aside systematically and used only when truly necessary, and then utilization of our economic uncertainties or rainy day reserve could only be used by a sixth, seventh vote of city council. And then additionally, if economic uncertainties funds are ever utilized and the level falls below the two-month reserve requirement, then the chief financial officer would bring forward a proposed plan to city council to, at the earliest practical moment, in order to replenish the fund within three fiscal years. So a lot of the benefits to this plan really have to do with maintaining our strong AAA bond rating. So cities with reserve, reserve policy, with robust reserve policies are more likely to improve and maintain their bond ratings, and they also want to see that, you know, it's constantly being reviewed and making sure that, you know, it stays current. So then next, I will turn over the presentation to our city engineer, Tom Herbell.
Thank you, Sunny, right behind you. So just to recap very briefly, I know we've got a lot going on, our budget this year is $41.2 million, and I think we walked through the paving cycle last time, so Sunny, if you could advance to the next slide. So since the last presentation on the CIP, a question did come up regarding where the funding was being used in the CIP for the almost $5 million of the AES money. I'd like to note that the AES money stems from an MOU in November of 2020, and more specifically, Section 2 of the MOU, which a few of the stipulations include neighborhood mitigation programs and southeast area neighborhood improvements. Therefore, the city developed this list in conjunction with the southeast area committee, and under the complete streets category, there is $2.5 million allocated for the projects you see there. There is also another $350,000 for Seeley Park playground equipment, that's new equipment. We also have another $100,000 for the Eater Park improvements. Sorry, I gotta stand up to look over the front row. And we have another $335,000 for the AES Banning Branch Library Master Plan. I do want to note that this is just phase one of a two-year plan to look at the Banning Branch Library, and now I've got that sign blocking the front of it, but it's the AES, thank you, Edison Park Reconfiguration for $1.2 million. And you'll see something down there called the contingency funds. One thing that we all are aware of is our increase in costs on everything. You buy a piece of pipe at Home Depot, it's double the cost it was a year ago. So those contingency funds are set aside for us to be able to use as we start bidding these projects and implementing them to make sure that we are able to fund those. So that's kind of our little contingency slash fund, because we do expect costs in the near future to even increase even more. As I look forward in the construction industry, prices are not coming down, they're still escalating, so we're trying to plan for that. So with that, that's the AES funding summary that was requested by council, and I'm happy to show you also the projects map. I know you're interested to see, we're spreading that love across the southeast area. So here is the project map that you see in front of you. I do want to note that some of the things that are listed on the previous slide are not actually figured out yet. We don't have the money in hand, until we have the money in hand, then we'll start planning for bike lanes and enhancements and things of that nature. Right now, they're a list, and once we get kicked off July 1, we'll start making sure we identify where some of the funds will actually be used.
Tom, thank you, my fellow southeast neighbors, you know, really reached out and want to make sure those funds are specifically for the southeast, so I appreciate you detailing that and letting us know.
You're welcome.
So thank you.
Councilmember, I would like to clarify one thing, if you look at the MOU that we signed, there's a couple categories in there that talk about mobility projects, not just in the southeast, and there's one other category that talks about other mobility projects. So two of the categories were specifically southeast, the other two apply in a little bit broader range.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And so then next, we'll be moving on to the budget balancing plan. So at the June 6 city council meeting, city staff were directed to provide a budget balancing plan in order to proactively address the fiscal year 2425 general fund projected deficit. So with that, department submitted potential revenue opportunities as well as expenditure reductions that totaled almost $7.2 million for council review that were broken into, broken out into two phases. So the Level 1 proposals would be effective immediately beginning July 1, and so the process to implement any proposed increased revenue options would begin at the start of 2324. Given the fact that there would be some additional work by staff that would be required, we would assume that we would recognize approximately 50% of these revenue opportunities in the 2324 fiscal year, and then 100% of these revenues in 2425, as well as in out-years. And then Level 2 are options that would take some additional time to implement, that couldn't be implemented immediately at the beginning of the fiscal year, and so with that, we are proposing that there be a six-month ramp-up period for any Level 2 approved, approved proposals, and so those would then therefore be effective January 1, 2024, just due to the level of effort as well as any potential service impacts. So with that, as the mayor had mentioned, and as you all have this evening, there is a revised budget balancing plan that was proposed that I'd like to present this evening. So with that, I did want to still use our original budget balancing plan, and then just highlight any additional, any changes that were made to the plan. So with that, for the Level 1 options, so those do include five options that would all be, that are all included in the amended budget balancing plan, and those include updates to the master fee and charges schedule, including potential increases to parking revenue, true-ups to our film permits that were not addressed at, during our last FEW study that was approved in March, and then also other things... our last FEW study that was approved in March, and then also other things such as potentially some other slight increment adjustments to parking, as well as to employee validations. And those impact various departments, so with that, I know one question that was also asked was that some of the numbers listed in the summary by department below did not necessarily tie out to the numbers by department when you looked strictly at the Level 1 and Level 2 budget reductions. So, within line number one, there is a co-mingling of the various revenue opportunities that were proposed by both community development, as well as community library services, and the city manager's office. So that particular breakdown was broken out in that summary, and I can provide that breakout as well. Secondly, we are looking at updating our emergency medical services, or EMS fees. These are largely paid by insurance companies, and these were last updated two years ago. And so with that, we could potentially recognize an additional $936,000 in annual revenue. We are also looking at potentially marketing our lifeguard tower advertisements, potentially through a franchise agreement, in order to generate additional revenue on our lifeguard towers. We're also looking at evaluating fines and fees related to the police department, which have not been updated since, I believe it was 2018. Additionally, we also have license plate reader citation revenue, which will be expected to go live in next month, in July. And so with that, we already have the license plate reader technology in place, so it is already set, so there is no additional action that council will have to take. It is just something that is an increased efficiency due to the technology provided by the LPR citations.
Question, Mr. Mayor. Why is it going to community and library services?
Only a portion of the proposed master fee and charges. But the community and library services is because they also oversee the parking division.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
So with that, so for our LPR revenue currently, the police department only comes across 90 scoff law vehicles using manual plate checks, and so we're anticipating that with this LPR technology, that number could easily double. Additionally, you know, there are other inhabits such as, you know, unpaid citations that could be seen using this technology, so we believe we can recognize revenues of at least $102,000. So then, with the revised Level 1 plan, we would also include all of the budget reductions that are on this lines from 1 to 9. So that does include the partial reprogramming of the one-time revenues for the Emerald Cove loan repayment. So rather than having this amount be transferred to our Section 115 trust, this would be used for other one-time costs, such as outreach for consulting costs for potential PCH relinquishment, as well as outreach for improved beach restrooms, just as an example. And then number two are our employee work enhancements, and so we are also looking at...
Can we go back real quick on that?
Of course.
Sorry, this is reprogramming, this is actually changing fiscal policy, so I want to make sure we're clear, that I'm clear on what this actually does. So, the Emerald Cove money is the redevelopment dollars that, through administrative law procedure, we were able to claw back from the state, correct?
Yes.
The total amount of general fund dollars for that was what?
It was like around 2.3.
2.3, so half of that, currently, how was, through our policy, what would that be programmed as?
So, we currently do not have a policy for one-time dollars. So with that, staff is recommending that half of it go to our Section 115 trust, and then the other half...
For pensions.
For pensions.
Right.
And then the other half go to the general liability fund.
General liability fund, so our rainy day fund.
No, so it would be used for general liability costs such as settlements and other legal fees.
Okay, so that would be the current recommendation. The budget balancing goes to reprogramming what would be going to pay for pension costs in the future to go pay, can you enumerate what the specifics are for that?
Certainly. So, the proposed one-time costs that would be used would be outreach for beach facility restrooms at $250,000, PCH relinquishment consulting costs at $150,000, and the airshow SEQA at $550,000.
Okay, so instead of using money to pay down our pensions, or put aside money that we're going to have to use in very near future for that, we're going to pay for an environmental document for the airshow?
Because that is a one-time cost, we did feel that it would be appropriate to use one-time revenues for one-time costs.
Okay, but the policy decision is to pay for this airshow's SEQA document. Thank you.
So then, with the employee work enhancements, so we are looking at a combination of items in this line item, so of course, all of these would be subject to a meet-and-confer with all of our bargaining units. I had spoken with our interim HR director, and if approved, implementation of this policy would take effect by the end of October. So some of the proposed items would be potential implementation of a 4-10 schedule, a telecommuting policy, closure of city hall either every other Friday, or potentially every Friday. By doing so, we would also be able to expand the hours Monday through Thursday, which should hopefully benefit the community as well.
On that question, is there a way to split it out to do, instead of shutting down Fridays, that we do maybe half the employees on Monday, half of them on Friday? That way, we're actually open Monday through Friday, but, you know, we have at least flex time for maybe half the members have a three-day weekend with the Monday, three-day weekend with the Friday. That way, we can continue our services and not just be done, you know, closed on Friday, because a lot of our citizens would like to see us open Monday and Friday, but understand we have some significant savings during the, you know, the four-day work week. So I would recommend to our city manager and our staff to maybe take a look, instead of saying shut down Friday, that maybe we would have half of them on Monday, half of them on Friday.
I agree.
Yes, and we can certainly look at that alternative, and, you know, we can discuss that with our interim HR, Teresa St. Peter, as well.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. So with that, also included in the work enhancements is also the potential of a holiday closure as well between Christmas and New Years. So then number three on the list is potential elimination of the circuit program, or removing the general fund subsidy and having it be funded through other means such as grants, sponsorships, or other auctions.
Just like to note that, found out this afternoon that SBE, that $350,000 for the circuit program from State Senator Dave Min was, is in the printed budget, so we'll find out Thursday if it passes, so we will have completely earmarked...
The full earmark of 350?
The full earmark for 350, in addition, 1.1 million for ongoing services at the Navigation Center as well, so a pretty large, but yeah, it's in the printed budget, so we got an update on that earlier. So fingers crossed for Thursday, but I just wanted to give that...
That when they're bringing up the state budget Thursday?
I believe so, yeah. But the money wouldn't arrive till March of '24, probably.
And so some other options would be a user rate adjustment, ad revenues, or vendor funding as well. So then number four would be a one-time cost. It would be elimination of the city clerk remodel at $100,000. And then number five is reclassification of the homeless and behavioral health position to the manager. So, you know, with this, it would also require some additional oversight by our assistant city manager, as well as by our police lieutenant that's currently assisting with the program. But we would recognize savings of slightly over $57,000. For number six, we are looking at surveying other cities to see what their policy is for employee medical exams, and so depending on the position that a potential new hire would hold, we could potentially remove certain items from the standard exam. So for example, all employees may not require a chest x-ray, for example, as a sample. But we are surveying all of the other Orange County cities as well, just to see what their policies are regarding employee exams. So then number seven is a proposal to eliminate funding for the My Sidewalk Dashboard Program. So with that, that was a proposed data transparency portal that would allow ease of information for the public, just to see information kind of more real-time, and that it would be data that would be able to be manipulated. This was something that was initially introduced pre-COVID, however, because of all of the other initiatives that had to be done during COVID, and with just our current staffing levels, we are proposing eliminating funding at this time, and then potentially bringing it back at a future date, as well as also looking at other alternatives besides My Sidewalk. Number eight would be elimination of the equipment replacement for an IS service van, so this is an aged vehicle. However, in speaking with both our fleet manager, as well as our CIO, we do feel that this is something we can postpone at least another year. And then additionally, we are looking at reducing equipment replacement in the IS area as well by $300,000. So this is not a full elimination of the planned equipment replacement in the CIO's office, but it does reduce the number of security cameras and some other equipment that is currently being, that was on the current original proposed budget. So then, number 10 is to terminate the ice rink contract by eliminating Year 3, unless there is a sponsor that would be able to fund this event. And then the number 11 is the aquatics summer swim lesson expansion. So this was a program that was last initiated pre-COVID, and so it basically expands swim lessons both at the marina and Edison pools. However, during COVID, as pools were shut down and classes were shut down, this program was eliminated, and it was put on hold during COVID, and also in the current years. There are concerns that there would be both insufficient staff to fund this, that would be able to staff this program, and we would also have to reevaluate the costs of pool rentals at both pools, so we are proposing to eliminate this program as well.
On this program, Golden West offers a lot of the swim lessons, as well as there's private operators at the Five Points area that also offer, so there's still swim lessons out there for our citizens.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so then next, number 12 is a proposal to eliminate a portion of the temporary salaries budget in the Housing and Permit Center divisions, and shift restricted fund grant work to the senior management analyst. So currently, some of this work is being performed by retired annuitants, and so we could be able to shift some of that to our newly hired, to our recently hired senior management analyst, and then we would also be able to transfer 85% of the senior management analyst salaries from the general fund into the CDPG and home grant funds. And so then, number 13 is replacement of three code enforcement vehicles. So our current vehicles are sedans, there was a request to upgrade these vehicles to trucks, however, upon further review, we determined that we could downgrade these vehicles and have them keep their current, and have them keep their current models, which are sedans. So this would provide both one-time savings by, through the cost savings from going from a truck to a sedan, but it would also decrease our ongoing maintenance costs as well by $15,000 a year. So then, for the Level 2 items, so what I would like to do, just with the mayor's approval and council's approval, is to highlight, to focus on the items that would be included in the revised budget plan. Alternatively, I can go through each item one by one. So, would you prefer that I only focus on the items in the revised plan?
Yes, absolutely.
Will do. So then, of the items on this slide, we are proposing to keep number 1, which is the elimination of a temporary department assistant, too. So currently, this position does help with the transcription of minutes for the city clerk's office. However, we do feel that with some transition time, that those duties would be able to be transferred to full-time staff. So then, item number 2 is also being recommended to stay on the revised budget balancing plan, and that would be reclassification of a multimedia officer to a multimedia coordinator, so this is...
On that note, on this item, I believe I mentioned to you, I believe we could move that from Level 2 to 1 and make it effective immediately. It wouldn't be that difficult for staff to do, is that correct?
Yes, as this position is vacant, it could potentially, it could be moved to Level 1.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay. And so then, number 3 would be a reduction of professional and contract services in the city manager's office by eliminating both their contingency and also strategically reducing the scope of work on some of their contracts. And that would result in additional savings of $30,000. So then, the next item that would be recommended to stay on the revised budget balancing plan would be item number 6, reduction of various public works contracts and maintenance budgets, totaling $46,700. And so that is also something that could be done. There may potentially be some delays in some public works projects, just as a potential service level impact. Then number 9 is the next item that we're proposing to keep on the revised list, which is gate arm efficiency savings. So we recently installed an automatic exit gate at the main prom parking structure, and so with that, we do believe that there could be less part-time staff at the structure to handle entrances and exits. However, we would still recommend a six-month ramp-up period for this, because we do still have visitors that will be utilizing their beach parking pass, that will also be paying with cash, that will still need to, you know, to go through part-time staff. And so as we are entering these heavy summer months, we would like to have this be a Level 2 item. So then next, on this next slide...
Sunny, real quick, sorry, on the previous one, I mean, to the mayor's point, I'm looking at number 6 and number 8. I mean, could those also be moved to Level 1, potentially?
So we're not proposing that number 8 be included on the revised plan. It would only be number 6 and number 9.
Yeah, yep.
Yes, but potentially, but, yes, potentially, number 6 could be included on Level 1 as well.
Okay, thank you.
So then next, on this slide, so the two items we are recommending to stay on the revised budget balancing plan would be number 16, which would be elimination of the Community Cafe/Community Forum. So this would eliminate approximately eight events on an annual basis, so the cost for a savings of $35,000. So that includes the cost for consultants, foods, and supplies, however, you know, this event could continue if there was funding from sponsors, donations, or other in-kind.
On this item, I believe it could also go to Level 1, so I'd recommend we do Level 1 on this item. But I also want to make it clear, if we're lucky enough, and hopefully enough, that we get the sponsorships for the support from the community, that's fantastic if we do that. I love getting the private sector coming in. If that's the case, it just, ongoing savings, just... If that's the case, it just, ongoing savings, just make sure that we're clear when we pass a budget, that city staff's not part of, part of that. But if they raise the money privately, that's fantastic.
Can I ask Mr. Mayor why we're okay with eliminating something that's very well-attended, that's been very successful, but we're going to keep $100,000 budget in for initiatives and other community outreach? Like, how come they can't share that budget? Community outreach, I've, I've seen your, your events, they have folks at them, but the community cafes are extremely well-attended by a diverse group of folks, and have been very successful ongoing. It seems like there's other budget that shares the exact same outcomes, which is-
How about, how about we just bring this item, we'll go through the whole thing, and then we'll bring this item back for debate?
Okay.
Is that fair?
So number 16 could potentially be moved to level one. However, I will defer to our interim director of community and library services, just to get her thoughts on that.
So Ashley, just the community cafe moving it to level one.
So planning-wise, it would make sense as a level one, just because the community cafe does span for one fiscal year versus straddling over two fiscal years. So for the planning purposes, it wouldn't make sense for us to start planning and then plan a full nine-month cycle of programming, and then have to cut it off at the, at January 1st. So this is a program that runs kind of similar to a school year cycle.
Got it, thank you.
Can I ask one question, actually, as well? I know we've, we've spoken a little bit about this. Obviously, this was the first year of this particular community and library services program, so there were ramp-up costs and things like that. Have you looked at the possibility of having those costs decreased?
Definitely. So we could look at other cost mitigation measures, such as eliminating or reducing the graphic artists that comes to each of the cafes. We have a couple of consultants who have really helped guide us. Our, our part-time staff really is instrumental in keeping us all in line and getting this program put together. But we could also look at options like reducing the, the meals, or the types of meals that were provided at, at this cafe, in addition to just some future planning and making sure that we're tackling the questions earlier. So I think the first year, there's always going to be more intensive planning sessions, and as we get our feet underneath us and really understand the rhythm of the program, inherently, the time needed to develop the program starts to diminish.
Thank you.
Okay, so then next, we are also proposing to keep item number 17 on the revised budget balancing plan. So this would reduce temporary salaries, overtime, equipment budget in both the inspection services and administration divisions in community development. So we do believe that, you know, this is something we can reduce. However, it is also contingent upon approval of the two additional combination inspectors that were discussed previously. So with that, there would, of course, be a ramp-up period to make sure that, you know, we would be able to, to have time to hire the new inspectors, and have them trained and placed fully, and be on, fully onboarded, just to ensure that there would not be a break in service. So then next, the next item that we would propose removing, or if we would propose keeping on the revised budget balancing plan, would be item number 20, reducing contract sign and lighting maintenance services and related equipment funding. So this would provide a savings of $62,000. And so then with that, so there are no other items from either budget balancing plan that are included from this list. However, there are two, there are, there's an additional item that we'd like to recommend as well, which is additional efficiencies that we would achieve through printer audits, as well as software audits, and that would be a level two item. So we would be, we believe we could recognize at least $100,000 in savings, once those printer audits and software license reviews have been completed. So then one other item in level, in level one, that was not included on the list as well, is managed hiring and achieving salary savings through the managed hiring that was first introduced on January 17th of this year. So with that, we can, staff believes that we can commit to $1.5 million in additional salary savings, beginning immediately in, on July 1st. So that is something that could be implemented right away.
Wonderful.
What is, what does that actually mean to the public? Like, for folks that aren't, don't work at HR and government, when you say managed hiring services, does that mean leaving positions open? Does that mean that, you know, our existing staff's going to have to take on more work? I don't know, it seems, it seems kind of nebulous, like, a little bit, kind of, for the audience and for those watching at home, what, what a million and a half dollars in managed hiring means?
So what that would mean is, we would evaluate our current vacancies, and we would also look at positions as they become vacant, as employees leave the organization, and we would evaluate whether those positions would be considered essential, and if they could also be funded. So with that, you know, both finance and the city manager's office would be involved in the process to see, you know, to see what positions should be filled, whether they are essential or not. And it would be generally in line with the mayor pro tem's H item that was first introduced in January. There are potentially, you know, impact, there are impacts, potential impacts to both existing employees, as there would be increased workload placed on existing employees, and, you know, there could be potential service level impacts as well. However, you know, that's something that we would still evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
And so on that note, again, all these ideas really come from staff. And again, I give you so much credit for coming back to us, and I know the city manager worked really, really hard on figuring out where there could be efficiencies, and you believed, as a staff, that you could come back and, and really manage a savings of 1.5 million on this item. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So then with that, this is a summary of the original budget balancing plan, so, which did have almost $7.2 million of savings, of ongoing savings. But that said, the revised budget balancing plan shows would have total ongoing savings of $7 million.
$7,039,530, to be exact, correct?
That is correct, yes. So then this is our long-term financial plan that was presented at the most recent strategic planning workshop. So it includes our projections for fiscal year, for the current fiscal year, as well as for '23, '24, '24, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27. So as you can see, so this is very, so for fiscal year '23, '24, the numbers are the same as what was presented in slide four, discussed earlier. However, I would just like to note that there was, there is one additional row. It's the fourth row from the bottom, that's listed as unidentified expenditures, and so that is also our cushion for any unexpected expenses that may occur, that haven't been accounted for in our projections, as well as upcoming labor negotiations that we have as well, potential other litigation costs, and just other expenditures that are unplanned that may come up. So we do have essentially a contingency amount of $1.5 million for next fiscal year, and then $2 million, and it increases in $500,000 increments in each out-year. So with the budget balancing plan, as shown on here, so you can see, the third row from the bottom is basically a reflection of what was shown on the previous slide. So if we did nothing, there would be a $160,000 surplus next year, and then a $7.4 million deficit in fiscal year '24, '25, increasing to a deficit of $11.7 million in fiscal year '25, '26, and then a projected deficit of $13.7 million in fiscal year '26, '27. So with the proposed budget balancing plan, as amended, we would have a surplus of $6.1 million in fiscal year '23, '24, and then a slight deficit of almost $400,000 in fiscal year '24, '25, a deficit of $4.7 million in fiscal year '25, '26, and then a potential $6.7 million deficit in '26, '27. So that said, with the projected deficit of approximately $400,000 in fiscal year '24, '25, with this revised budget balancing plan, we do also, we will also continue, of course, to look for other efficiencies, as well as other revenue opportunities as well. So one thing that I have discussed at previous presentations is also doing an update of our fee study. So as I mentioned, the last fee study was completed in 2016. In May, we did do just more of a cost-of-living trip, but a full analysis has not been done. So I do believe that, you know, we can also recognize additional revenues from the updated fee study. There are also potentially other efficiencies that we may be able to obtain, just from beyond the printer audit and reviewing our software licenses. So, you know, of course, we can also look at each of our departments and see, you know, what are, in what other areas we can potentially, you know, utilize technology, or look at other alternatives to potentially reduce our budget.
So I think, yeah, I think it bears repeating. Again, like I said earlier, appreciate the patience from the community, but we want to be meticulous, take our time, do it right, and it's important to focus on the future years, especially '25, '26, '26, '27. I mean, through these efforts of taking extra time, we've lowered the, the future potential deficits by over 60%. So it's important, it's like Councilwoman Comic says, this means really important, but it's worth taking the time to be meticulous and see what all options are on the table. So we got, set our city on a strong financial path forward. So, you know, I really appreciate the efforts from staff to come back with that.
And Mayor, just a reminder for council comments, so we have a public hearing, so if you have questions for staff-
No, and, yeah, this is the phase of, of, yeah, we're not going into action items, we're just asking questions at this point. Sunny, I have a really quick question. I think this is the right time to ask. I authored a bill when I was in Sacramento on a two-year budget, because there's more stability when you talk about going through and adopting two-year budgets, where you can make adjustments in some of those two years, and there's not as much fluctuation. What would be your opinion on, I know it would be a charter reform idea, but what, what do you believe a two-year budget would do in terms of benefits to staff, as well as to the city, in terms of when we do these items?
Absolutely, so I'd be happy to comment on that. So with a biennial budget, you know, it would, one, reduce the workload on staff, which would help tremendously, especially if the managed hiring aspect of the budget balancing plan is approved, because of course, we would be operating with less staff. Additionally, with a biennial budget, you know, we would be able to have more of a structured plan for two years, rather than just focusing on one year. Of course, we would still have an update at the end of each year, so we would still provide updated projections, as well as, you know, updated appropriation requests. But, you know, overall, there are a number of cities in Orange County that do have a biennial budget, so, you know, it is definitely something that could provide a benefit both to, you know, the community, the council, to the community, the council members, you know, as well as to city staff.
Great, thank you for that. Other questions from members at this time? Go ahead, Councilman.
Sunny, on the '23, '24, say you got that $5.5 million in surplus at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, does that go, return back into the recurring revenues? Is that where that goes?
It does not. So that goes into our reserves, and so it could, so with that surplus, it could be first assigned by council, with council approval, to potentially certain strategic initiatives, such as one-stop shop, maybe additional, additional assignments to the Section 115 Trust, or other options. The remainder of the surplus would be split according to our general fund reserve policy, where 50% of it would go to our pension stabilization reserve, and then of the remaining 15%, 50%, half of that 50% would go to our rainy day fund, and then the remainder, the remaining 25% would be split, 12.5%, 12.5% to both our equipment replacement and our capital project reserves.
Thank you, that clears up-
Thank you. Any other questions at this time, from the members? Seeing none. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak for this public hearing?
I do have a few more slides, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought-
I apologize.
I apologize, go ahead.
You know, so that being said, I did also just want to recognize, you know, both my budget team, our acting assistant chief financial officer, Serena Bubenheim, and our principal finance analyst, Glenna Slitback. They did an amazing job putting this together in a very short period of time, especially with, you know, you know, and then also, I'd like to recognize all of our department heads, managers, and analysts. You know, this was, you know, done, you know, in a very compressed amount of time, and they all did an absolutely amazing job, so.
And you did an amazing job as well.
So then our next item is some proposals regarding our boards and commissions. So with implementation of the proposed budget balancing plan as revised, it will increase the workload on city staff, particularly with the managed hiring component. So with that, it will reduce the time that's available just to complete our essential work duties. So just to ensure that core city functions are maintained, and that there, you know, we minimize the impacts, any service level impacts to the community, staffs requesting policy direction from council to reduce the frequency of meetings for certain boards and commissions to every other month for a period of one year. So we have five commissions that we are proposing to, to adjust the frequency of meetings, and that's the Harbor Commission, Finance Commission, Jet Noise Commission, Historic Resources Board, and then the Central Park Collaborative. Additionally, any boards and commissions requests for staff hours beyond four hours, as determined by the primary staff liaison, you know, with concurrence by the department head and city manager, would also require city council approval. Now, so this would just also help to offset some of the challenges related to the managed hiring process.
On that, that, we're not taking action tonight on that, correct?
We are, that is something that could be discussed through the Boards and Commissions Ad-hoc Committee.
Thank you, thank you.
So just to provide a little bit more information, so then approved requests would be completed based on staff capacity, and in the following priority order, ensuring that day-to-day responsibilities are met, and then also followed by strategic plan priorities. Of course, you know, formalizing this process would require review and updates to our municipal code section 2.1, the operating policy for boards and commissions. And then the regular report to the city council on the strategic plan will note any changes to the implementation of priorities, just due to the work related to any city council-approved assignments beyond core boards and commissions duties. And so with that, we do have a number of action items that are being requested for council approval this evening. And so with that, we are requesting adoption of a budget for fiscal year '23, '24, and as amended to include the impacts of both the recently approved POA MOU, also incorporating the additional parking revenues, along with the approved revenue and expenditure impacts related to the revised budget balancing plan discussed tonight. We're also requesting approval of the professional services listing included in the fiscal year '23, '24 budget. Also- 2324 budget, also authorizing the appropriation transfer of the full $4.9 million balance of the AES reserve from the general fund to the AES mitigation projects fund in 1284 as discussed by our city engineer. We're also requesting appropriation and transfer of $3.9 million from the general fund equipment replacement reserve to the equipment replacement fund 324. We're also requesting approval to revert back to a 12-year paving cycle in order to achieve a balanced budget, and then also requesting approval to adopt Resolution 23, 2023-25, establishing a GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 2324. We'd also like to adopt Resolution 2323, levying a retirement property tax for fiscal year 2324 to pay for pre-1978 public safety employee retirement benefits. We're also requesting council approval to adopt Resolution 2023-27, amending the city's classification plan by adding the classifications of graphic designer, multimedia coordinator, homeless services manager, and municipal services manager. We would also request the council approve the recommended update of the general fund reserve policy and consolidation of certain general fund assignments into the economic uncertainties of rainy day reserve. Also adopt Resolution 2023-26, acknowledging receipt of report made by the fire chief of the Huntington Beach Fire Department regarding inspection of certain occupancies required to perform annual inspections. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the professional services contract with Mind OC for the Bewell HB Mobile Crisis Response Program. Approve the professional services contract with the National Council of, for Community Development, or NDC, for technical assistance services. Approval of the professional services contract with Hindorland Leader Delamas or HGLN Associates for sales and use tax auditing services. And then approval of the budget balancing plan as revised to proactively address the fiscal year 2425 projected general fund deficit. We'd also include an additional action to approve modification to the frequency of select boards and commissions, but, you know, as discussed, that can certainly be discussed during, with the Boards and Commissions Ad Hoc Committee. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. If there's any additional questions, I can take them at this time.
Do we still have questions, or can we move on to, okay. So, City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak for this public hearing?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Approximately 53 people. I have sheets for, but I will say that some people did sign up and spoke during the public comment portion of the meeting as well. I'm going to call, you know, in groups of 10 like I normally do, and some might be repeats. At the end of the hearing, if you have not been called, just come down to the podium to speak, and we'll catch up, all right?
Okay. I have to read this. Individuals wishing to provide a comment or items scheduled for public hearing may do so either by in person or filling out a request to speak form delivered to the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. Is there a difference between giving testimony now versus giving testimony earlier for any way, shape, or form?
So a public hearing like this for public comments is a little bit more, I mean, the comments are more salient, so to have that record for this public hearing is good in case it ever has to be reviewed. The public comments that were offered before are also in the record in case it has to be reviewed, but for organization purposes and for courts, for instance, to look to see, you know, what happened here, they do look for this portion. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't quite, I haven't done a big public hearing on this in a while, so thank you.
Okay. I'm going to first, I'll call the first group of 10. Shirley Detloff, Kathy Ryder, Meg Robinson, Diane Bentley, Ken Inoue, Kathy McGuire, Shammy D., Gigi Jackson, Pat Goodman, Debbie Cook.
Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having us. Good evening, Mayor Strickland and members of the city council. My name is Shirley Detloff. I've been a resident since 1964 in our great city. I'm here tonight to speak on the budget. I had come tonight really prepared to make a statement that I was very supportive of the information that our staff had prepared and the information that had been sent out to us on Friday. However, hearing so much new information, I will not take a stand at this, this time because I want to look over the materials you've provided tonight very carefully, but I have been pleased with some of the changes that I saw. But I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to Sunny and to your staff. You did an exceptional job under very difficult circumstances, and even though some of the reserve funds were used, you really, in your product that I saw over the weekend, you did have a balanced budget, and I felt it must be passed before July 1st, and that's, of course, what the council is going to have to do tonight. But what I really would like to talk about, that when you begin your work on the upcoming financial situation, that you should have input from the citizens of this community. You should have workshops to educate the public on the budget process. These should be held at places like the library, city hall, or even the senior center. Most of our citizens don't know how this very important process was conducted. Receiving documents on Friday before a Monday meeting does not make for educated citizens. We must now face the future, which shows us that we must make changes. These public meetings would show our constituents how the budget is written, who is responsible, and what alternatives are available to the decision-makers. However, most important, it will show you what is important to the citizens of this community. After reading the background materials on this year's budget and seeing the potential cuts, it's extremely important to know what your constituents want in their city and what priorities they have. After the last meeting, it was shown just how important that libraries are. Many of us who have spent a lifetime working towards making this city what it is today want to know that their work will not be destroyed. Also, the future is changing in a most challenging way. Have you spent time looking at what climate change is doing and will be doing in the immediate future? Have you spent time on a sea level rise or read the two reports your staff has repaired? What will this mean to our city and the very important tourism industry, which is the basis of our economy? What if we were to have a recession and all that we can't even predict now? So let's, a very educated public, be a part of your decision-making process. Learn what they feel is most important.
10 seconds.
And then follow through with thoughtful decisions, and I thank you for your time and the information we've received so far.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, and HB residents. Kathy Ryder, homeowner and voter here in HB since 1985. Adopting a balanced budget is one of the most important tasks of our elected officials. Our council members need to rely on their staff to draft a budget, and then we hope that they will spend hours reading and reviewing the staff proposals. The council should also make sure that they take time to listen to the public, to find out what we believe is best for our city. And each year, my understanding is that a budget must be adopted by June 30th. In 2023, our budget was structurally sound. It looks as if in 2324, our budget is structurally sound. What I was able to read over the weekend left a lot of questions. Suddenly tonight, I was given another piece of paper that I didn't really have a chance to observe, but I do want to know if every single department did make an attempt to make some budget cuts. It didn't look as though that was the case. And we were promised transparency and accountability. It was a significant promise during the November 22 election cycle. Where is it? I certainly appreciate the staff and all of their efforts to look at each department budget and preparing some proposals that would help to close the over $7 million deficit going forward from 2024 and even beyond, but there was one set of proposals that was particularly upsetting to me. 41% of the folks who live here in Huntington Beach are 65 or older. There should never be an opportunity to make cuts to any of their services. For example, I deliver meals to some of our senior citizens every Monday, and three on my route are veterans, two people are in wheelchairs, and none of them have a car to drive to the stores. So the home-delivered meals is their lifeline, and on Mondays, we also provide a wellness check because it's been the weekend. These meals delivered to them five days a week are absolutely necessary. I would hope that we would never turn our backs on our most vulnerable citizens. We must do better. And looking at the proposed revenue options, they still seem very narrow. Let's start thinking outside the box. I suppose, I propose that we take a step back under the budget reduction proposal plans because it all came spinning at us tonight, and we need to make sure that every item, including the budget expenditures for the city council, the budget expenditures for the city attorney, the budget expenditures for the city treasurer, also have an opportunity to make some budget reductions. We can do better, we must do better to preserve the quality of life that I have come to depend on in my city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Strickland, good evening, council members. Pat Goodman from Huntington Beach, and a couple of comments regarding the budget. First things first, please adopt the budget that was, at the time, presented the June 6 city council meeting. You could adopt that and move on with any kind of budget adjustments, that kind of thing. Engaging the public, it's really important, and I think tonight even, we've heard some really good ideas. It is, that budget was balanced, provides a prudent way to proceed with the business of the city without defaulting on vendor payments, providing services, and maintaining a good bond rating. It's very important to address budget deficits in the 2023, 24 budget and for outlying years in a way that is instructive and engages the community. Please take the time to engage the community in understanding what the budget-related issues are regarding revenues and expenditures, and try to grow the revenue that might come about. That said, I'm very concerned about the state of financial affairs of our city. I think this last couple of weeks, it's been, I have a sense that it's been rather chaotic as far as going through this gyration. It's, it's really unsettling, and I think that the proposed cuts, the first set, and I don't know if the second set, is that even legal to spring that on us, like during a meeting? I don't know. That doesn't sound very professional at, at a minimum. So the proposed cuts of maintenance and services are going to do really great harm to the aesthetics, health, and safety to our city and negatively impact our revenue. And I don't know if there was any kind of analysis of that done, if we cut maintenance services at the beach, is that going to play into decline in occupancy of hotels, that kind of thing? So, and someone else mentioned that it may even lower property values. It appears to me that these deficits in future years are tied to our legal woes brought on by ourselves. As a non-expert and time-constrained reviewer of the budget, I can put my finger on a few items that have negative impacts on our budget in the millions, and they've been listed already this evening.
10 seconds.
Evening. You need to be upfront, transparent with us, and give us a full accounting of all legal matters the city has encountered in the last few years.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of the city council. My name is Ken Inoue. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I'm a CPA who has worked with my clients for over 40 years to help them develop and evaluate budgets. Before I make my comments, I'd like to personally thank our Chief Financial Officer, Sunny. Without her help, I would not be able to go through all these numbers and find out the facts that are contained in these budgets. So finally, Sunny, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are very sorry to hear that you will be leaving us to work for our competitive city, the city of Irvine, but we, since you live in Huntington Beach, I know we will see more of you. Thank you. I would like to call your attention to page 27. I know a lot of discussion has been made relative to the current budget, but on page 27, for the three years ended, the 26, 27 fiscal year, in case McCone has mentioned to that, we have a budget deficit of $33 million. Now, I'm not here to place blame for that because this is not the place to do that, but what I am suggesting, that now is the time for the city to come together and develop a comprehensive financial budget plan that will see us through the upcoming budget deficits. I believe that this budget plan should include an analysis of where we are budget-wise, a summary and evaluation of all the reserves, in which reserves can be applied to general operations, if any. I believe the budget consideration, contingent liabilities such as potential lawsuits concerning the, or fight to combat the city, the state housing mandate, and also, I guess what I'd like to say is that, ladies and gentlemen, now is the time for us to come together. We have a challenge before us. You guys were elected to represent all of the people, and all the people here are concerned about the well, financial well-being of the city, and I would encourage all of you to take to heart all of the comments of the many people that were here, wanted to be here, and are still here, so that you can help make this city the financial, really the greatest place in the world to live in a fiscally responsible manner. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
For the record, my name is Debbie Cook, and I've spent the last 15 years avoiding a meeting, avoiding watching you guys on TV, and, but tonight I came, came, and I listened to the last number of hours, and I decided, oh, I'm going to say something. My husband and I have lived in Huntington Beach for most of our lives. He was in the second graduating class at Edison High School. We were trying to rack our brains over the years, you know, when was a, has a city council ever closed a library? And so that's really why I came down here. And no, I don't think there's ever been a city council that's closed a library in Huntington Beach because the public values libraries. They value transparency. They, they value getting along with people, although you can't tell it from meetings in the last number of years. And it's, it's troubling to me as a former council member, but I think what happens is new people come in and they fail the most important test, which is to observe first. We should observe the culture of the community we try to serve, and when we don't do that, then we have these weird clashes that don't even need to exist. For example, tonight with this, somebody came out and announced that the libraries weren't going to be closed. Well, why are we poking the beehive like that? It, you know, we were given this document at the last minute that says you're not going to close it, but the truth is, one person doesn't decide that they're going to close a library or not. If they, I mean, if, if four of you got together and decided we're going to take that off, I mean, that's a Brown Act violation. So it's not appreciated when the public isn't giving the information they need upfront. Just a lot of hasty things seem to have happened in the last number of months that poke the beehive, and then this happens, and then people end up hating each other. Nobody leaves a meeting like this thinking they won. Nobody leaves thinking, oh, I'm better because of it. It would be nice to have a, a meeting where, where people actually could collaborate, and one of those things, one of those things requires you reaching out and saying to the public, we, we need to make some cuts. How can you help us? What can you offer? You know, if it, if it is a library, I think in this community, you would find that people would raise money to, to save libraries. I want to respond also to a couple of things that were said earlier. One was about the SEQA, paying for a private company's environmental assessment. I've never heard of that. That's just ridiculous that we would spend a half a million dollars to a private company to do their environmental assessment.
10 seconds.
And then the next thing is contingency. I don't think we've ever hired a lawyer on a contingency basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yeah, I'm going to go with the next set of 10. Paul Simons, Kurt Ruland, Nora Peterson, Roy McCord, Honey Abramowitz, Jonathan Rust, Midge Hill, Jaclyn.
Midge Hill, Jaclyn Broat, Kay Goddard, Monica Goodwin.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'll keep this short. I had a prepared statement that's now changed due to this lengthy meeting. My name's Jonathan Rust. I've been a full-time resident of Huntington Beach since 2007, and I want to reinforce the fact that I'm against cutting the budget to the library. I think it's very important to our community to keep those services full. I'm glad to hear that that's not the case anymore. But one thing that has struck me throughout this whole meeting is that the city, a number of, every office in the city is looking for ways to cut budget and increase revenue, but I have not seen that from the city's attorney's office, and that struck me as a little uncringuous. I don't have, I don't want to tell you what to do, but I do think that that's something of an outlier here where everybody else is asked, being asked to cut, reduce expenses except for the city's attorney's office. The other thing is, is that the air show seems to be costing us a lot of money. And I've never seen anywhere anything that shows that there's a return on our investment there. So, I do think that at this point, we have a private operator that's suing us for seven or eight million dollars, I'm not quite sure what, and I'm not sure that's a partner, partnership that we need anymore. So, it would be, I think, with all these expenses that need to be reduced for the budget, then it's something worth looking at. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
You know, it's interesting. I'm Kay Goddard, and I've been observing this council since January, and this is the first evening I've heard a genuine exchange at the dais and between the people and you all who are putting together the budget for the next few years. That puts us clearly in a deficit in the next two years. So, I'm here to say, I appreciate the openness tonight and the ability to listen to what we have to say, and I hope that this will continue to be a new modus operandi for this council so that we can understand better and perhaps you'll have more dialogue at the dais so that people can question what's happening and how we're doing something. It's very difficult to understand the goal of what's being done in the last six months. What is the purpose? What is the goal? The most mysterious part for most of us is the city attorney's office because it looks large and big and it's something we can't know about. Well, if you have a private attorney, it's certainly something you can know about, so it's difficult to understand for most of us why this is true with the council. The things that are on the agenda, while I'm disturbed at the idea of turning our lifeguard towers into our local, you know, the billboards that we see on our freeways all the time, there are things you can do that can raise money, and if that's one of them, okay. I do urge you to leave the libraries, and I think you've left that alone at this point, the libraries alone, and the parks and the beach. Those are two significant draws for the city of Huntington Beach, for its citizens, for all of us and for our guests that come from out of town. So, it looks like those have been taken off, although at the last minute, I was prepared to say more about some of that, but since that looks like it's been removed for this go-around. If we go to two-year planning ahead, we need to have far more transparency and inclusion, and others have suggested, hold meetings throughout the city at different times and let us hear and let us understand and let us participate with the money we pay into our taxes. So, I thank you for this evening and for more clarity, and I encourage you for greater transparency in the future. Thank you.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi. So, I'm Jaclyn Broat. I am a member of the Huntington Beach Atlants Conservancy and, sorry, nervous. I'm also a former board member of the Friends of the Library, also known as FOTL. I love the city and its home. The decisions that the city council has made recently are just mind-numbing and shocking. It is evident that you do not listen to the majority of your constituents, and so many Huntington Beach residents that come up here last week to speak against item 18, and you just bulldozed your way through it. Your body language is so obvious that all of you are not listening to what we are saying, and it was not about us. It's about what you wanted for the city, and that was sad. The one good thing that came out of this is seeing so many people come together, speaking and trying to keep our city fair for all. For that, I am grateful, and it made me proud to be a part of that community. Our city is not a welcoming city anymore for those who disagree with your thinking. I have two beautiful, intelligent daughters that live elsewhere in this country, and they will not come back here to live in Huntington Beach because they do not like what we have become. The one good thing that you did last week was prove them right, and this absolutely breaks my heart. I originally came up here to talk about the library and not to close them because I loved the library and so did my kids, and obviously many people did. So, thank you for not closing them because that would have been probably one of the stupidest things you could have done. But thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you for what you are doing to improve our city. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, I'll go with the next stack. Michelle Ferry, Mary Madigan, Jean Farins, again, these are repeats because they, but they can speak twice. Terry Rose, Russell Karp, Erin Spivey, Natalie D., Ashley Dos Santos, Scott Miller, Melanie Bergland.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I thought I was going to have to leave. I missed bedtime already, so I'm getting closer. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Erin Spivey, better known to my patrons as Erin the Librarian. Some of them are still here. I do have the distinct honor of serving this lovely city as a librarian, but I'm here to oppose any cuts to the library and community services budget now or in the future. I am relieved that the library cuts have been taken off the proposal for tonight. However, I'm not here to talk as a city employee, but as a resident of over 30 years. When I came into this world, I went directly from the hospital to the home my parents still live in. I left to go to college and start my adult life. I made the conscious decision to return to my hometown to raise my children because I love this city. Huntington Beach offers a wonderful community with great schools, amazing amenities and a robust library system. My children are still very young, three, six and 14, so maybe he's not so young anymore, but he's my first baby. Yet, these budget debates and various contentious topics, I fear that the city they will live in is dimmer than the one I grew up in. They will lack the love of community due to the decisions that are being made here tonight. And I want to make this clear. Community and love for community is built in parks and libraries and schools. It is not built through business deals and property density statistics. Community is built through our engagement of each other. That doesn't happen in the offices of City Hall. That happens at community cafes, book clubs, storytimes, senior dances. This is community, and this is what makes people fall in love with Huntington Beach. Lastly, as a city employee, I want to plug a community program I am organizing at my library branch, the Main Street Library, the historic site of our first city-built library. This would have been on the chopping block had we not decided to hold off on library cuts for now, but this Saturday morning, before the celebratory carnival kicks off downtown, we are offering a program called Books and Bikes: Wheels and Wonder. It is a morning dedicated to getting our bikes, scooters, strollers ready for 4th of July. The community can come together to decorate their bikes or rides, getting them ready for all the festivities. A bike mechanic will be there to pump up their tires, tighten handlebars. And I invite you all to attend. I invite you to attend.
Good evening, Russell Karp. I spoke earlier, and I, I had prepared notes for that, but I came and I listened, and I listened to the presentation that was very well-done by the city staff, and I listened to the council, and I'm glad that there was some interaction, and that means a lot to me. The one thing I was really disappointed in is I didn't see a posting for this meeting on Channel 3. It's not there. I don't know if it was an oversight, but if we could just make sure that people are informed and not three days only in advance. The couple of things that I really want to just reiterate tonight is that, number one, we talked about libraries. I'm glad that you took it off and you're going to fund them. Libraries, beaches, parks, you should never consider taking money away from those items. There's plenty of other things. And some of the ones you should add, and Councilman Kalmak mentioned it, Circuit and the gentleman that spoke from Circuit mentioned it, I use it. I'm handicapped. I'm a senior citizen. You know, it's a good service. And because we found means in tonight's meeting to fund it, I would ask, and I don't know the process, but that you amend the budget or one of you agree to amend the budget and put the funding back in there because they've shown that they're going to have the money available either from state, or the gentleman who spoke mentioned that he's getting majority of the money back from other means. So, you know, it's a small dollar amount compared, you know, it's just a small needle in the haystack. So, I would ask you to do that. I appreciate all your hard work, and thank you for the opportunity for being here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. So, I picked up the wrong color paper. I should have been a pink. My name is Terry Rose, and I'm still a little confused about the budget, particularly in light of Mayor Strickland's comment on no budget cuts to the library. Does that mean that, quote, "We will no longer have the money or be spending the money to have the city attorney and the city manager," quote, "return in September with suggestions for limiting what's available to children at the five libraries?" I'm more concerned with regulations for electric bikes and potential revenue from the electric bikes, and also about affordable housing and homelessness and climate control. And why are we paying the Pacific Air Show millions of dollars for an oil spill that we didn't create? So, I'd like to go back to the books, though. Is this study that's supposed to be completed by September now off the books? Is there going to still be a study or no study? You haven't talked about the study at all. Of course, it wouldn't cost that much money, but it still is spending our city funds to have the city manager and the city attorney engaged in these things. So, I just want to talk a little bit about the city's collection development policy as well. So, in the past, the librarians have worked with the city attorney's office to look at the city collection development policy every few years to ensure our processes remain consistent with the First Amendment protection and the national industry standards. Is this now off the budget as well? Are we still going to be doing anything like that? Because I didn't see it on any of the line items. So, the library's collection development policy defines the collection selection and request for items removal. I suggest you take advantage of that formal process as individuals rather than dictating what books can be in our public library and spending Sydney funds for it. Thank you.
Thank you. You can go ahead and start.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak here today. My name is Kimberly, and we're here to talk about budgeting and financing for a beautiful city such as Huntington Beach that I, I'm not a resident, but I live so close to it that I love Huntington Beach. I have beautiful memories of Huntington Beach. And quite frankly, you know, I'm also concerned because the city also had the largest municipal bankruptcy in history, 1995, that I'm not sure if anyone's aware of, but it's also something that we need to look back even 20 years later to avoid something like that. And we have some of these council members who ran on promises to protect taxpayers such as Mayor Strickland. And quite frankly, I am going to voice a bit of my worry and concern over these council members because, again, like many mentioned, who's paying for all these lawsuits? I mean, come on, like, folks, we also have to do a bit of research when it comes to electing people. It's not that hard. Mayor Strickland committed money laundering in Ventura. He had to pay $40,000 as a result of this. If you think I'm lying, go search it up. Our city attorney can help Google. He had to Google whether children had constitutional rights. That's something he should have known. It's protected by the equal protection clause in the 14th Amendment. I learned that in middle school, no offense. But also, I just want to say, in regards to the city attorney, he's costed the city of Huntington Beach over $2 million in his lawsuit that he settled with Neil Moore and Scott Field because of age discrimination. Now, these people are constantly wasting taxpayer money, and it's ridiculous. This money can go to so many beautiful things such as parks, recreational centers, senior citizens, like so many beautiful things. And I, I'm just like, quite frankly, like, what are, who's paying for some of these dumb ideologies you guys are funding? And not also that, like, back to this library thing, I'm very happy that the library isn't cut. The library helped me graduate university, so I, I'm like an avid library person. And one thing I learned is, don't F with librarians, like, like, come on. We show up in numbers, guys. And, you know, for those saying like, about Gracie and her proposed book ban, whether she likes to call it a ban or not, still censorship, and I mean, if we're going to make someone the face of protecting the children, I wouldn't want someone who surrounds herself with white supremacy to be that face. If you guys think I'm lying, again, search this up. And for anyone who's like, she's Latina, she can't think these things, just because you're a person of color doesn't exclude you from having these ideologies, first of all. But also, I just want to say, I'm just your average taxpayer who wants you guys to have more transparency when it comes to the people you're voting in office. Thank you.
The next group. Laura Steingold, Linda Rose, Chris Clue or Clume?
Clue.
Cluey, sorry. Julie Evans, Karen Jackal, Jessamine Garner, Mary Jacobs, Martha Elliott, Randy Kocal, Larry Sloanam.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Chris Cluey, 15-year residence, resident of Huntington Beach. And first off, I want to make clear, I did not want to be here tonight. I was supposed to be coaching freshman football. It's their very first day. I was also supposed to be making dinner for my children. Now, the fact I have to waste my time convincing elected representatives not to violate the First Amendment is a travesty, but here we are. I am under no illusions that the religious zealots on this council board will care of one iota.
Hold on, I want to ask a question of the city clerk or city attorney. Doesn't this have to be germane to the budget?
Oh, I'll get there. Don't worry.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, if that's correct.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, make sure your comments are narrowed to the budget we have before us.
Okay. Am I, is my time paused? Thank you. I am doing this so future historians have a record of what is going on here. In the council's proposed budget, we are cutting $1.5 million worth of employees, all right? I've noticed that the mayor wants $100,000 for campaign outreach, that he terms coffee with the mayor, and our city attorney wants to add four full-time positions at $600,000 while we are staring down the barrel of bankruptcy. All of these, while concerning, are not what I want to ask the members of this board, mainly the fundamentalist ones led by Ms. Vandermark. What I want to ask is, do you consider the unexplained expenses part your personal piggy bank for the lawsuits that are going to come to this city due to your proposed book ban? Because let me be clear, what you are trying to attempt does not come cheap. In Brown versus Entertainment Merchants Association, in which the state of California attempted to ban the sale or rental of violent video games to minors back in 2011, the Supreme Court found overwhelmingly, in a vote of seven to two, that not only did the state not have the right to ban the dissemination of such information, they also agreed that California taxpayers would have to pay the legal fees of the defendants for bringing such a sp-. such a serious suit. If I can quote that noted progressive icon, Antonin Scalia, "The Constitution does not give the state a free-floating power to restrict the ideas to which children may be exposed." The price tag of that lawsuit was over $1.1 million for just the defendants alone, and we all know inflation has gotten much worse since then. Maybe that's why the city attorney wants another four full-time employees, because surely one of them might be able to explain the First Amendment to him. Spoiler alert, the case I just cited says children do in fact enjoy the same First Amendment rights as adults. Again, I do not in any way believe this will change your minds. You are not swayed by overwhelming public opinion against Ms. Vandermark's proposed agenda item at last week's board meeting. You ignored legal experts educating you on the Miller test for obscenity, and it is abundantly clear that your concern for children is nothing more than a naked power grab that will stop at nothing, including attempting to tear down cherished institutions like our public libraries. I'm here today so the citizens of this city can see you exactly for what you are and what you will cost all of us as taxpayers. The First Amendment guarantees your freedom of religion, and I will fight to my dying breath to preserve that. You can observe what you believe as much as you want in the privacy of your thoughts in your homes. However, the First Amendment also guarantees the freedom of everyone else from your religion so they can be free to practice what they believe. If you ignore that, not only will you cost this city money it cannot afford to lose, you pit yourself against the very idea of what it means to be an American. Council members Bolton, Moser, and Kalmak, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks so much for being here. Next speaker. Thank you.
Good evening. First, thank you for listening to the community. When we showed up in massive support for our libraries, I'm really glad to see that those services and the hours are not being cut for that. I also would like to urge you all to reconsider the cutting funding for Circuit as well as the community cafe events. I think those things are very, very valuable for the community. I think they're worth investing in. But mostly, I really want to talk about the staff in the city attorney's office. The additional staff in the city attorney's office wouldn't be necessary if four of the city council members of you who are sitting right here had not pushed so hard against state housing laws as to file a lawsuit against the state and force the state to file a lawsuit against our city. And Mr. Gates, I know you said earlier that you didn't ask for these lawsuits to be filed, but you literally campaigned on it, so I'm really not sure where that's coming from. You all, every single one of you, speak extensively about the need to solve homelessness, and yet I hear very little acknowledgement that in order to truly solve homelessness, our unhoused neighbors need homes to live in. The housing element process would boost our efforts to end homelessness, but instead we're spending millions of dollars on litigation to avoid having to follow the same laws that will help address the issues that your constituents, all of the people sitting here and sitting at home, truly care about the most. We don't need more money for the city attorney's office. We need more money for housing, for libraries, for parks, and public work projects that will help our city run smoothly and increase quality of life for all residents and visitors. I'm disappointed but not surprised in a budget that protects the city council majority's unlawful decisions. We continue to lose community members to high housing prices. We continue to lose community leaders from high-powered positions because of poor management. And if taken to the extreme, these decisions will result in school closures, chronically empty retail space, lower tax revenue, and a homogeneity of the populace that will be detrimental to the financial sustainability of our city. I urge you to invest in our libraries, invest in real solutions for homelessness, and invest in our seniors, not in wasteful litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mary Jacobs, and I have a few things to follow up about the city attorney's budget. I'd like to note that the city attorney's office has done a good job of controlling expenses until this budget. It's very disappointing. Looking back at the numbers in the budget from 2019, 2020 through 2021, 22, the budget was 2.6 million. And in 22, 23, a slight increase to 2.9 million. However, this recent budget jumps up by a large 36% increase to 3.8 million. That's over a million more. I'm wondering, why are we having to do this big jump? Now, is it because of what was said in the budget under the attorney, city attorney discussion? The city attorney, with the support of the city council, will continue a strong effort in current litigation with regard to issues of local control, i.e. local policing, local zoning, local housing, and local planning, including maintaining and even defending the city's local control efforts, which are currently being undermined by state, recent state legislation? Well, first of all, I'd like you to consider whether or not this is a position that we really want to take and proceeding with, whether or not proceeding with these lawsuits are worth it, even either now or ever, or whether they fall in the category of tilting at windmills. These would include the Affordable Housing Law and California's sanctuary status. I also would like to comment that if we do need more lawyers, I don't think that going at it and increasing by four in a department of, what was it, 11 last year? And also, these four positions is 28% of the overall employee increase in the whole city for fiscal year 23, 24. Now, to me, we did have a saying for this where I worked, and it's called empire building. I don't think that has any place in a city, and I don't think it has any place in the city attorney's office. I would ask that you take a quick look at this, or a long look if it takes that, and look whether or not you support the policies that are causing this, and whether you or the city, people of the city, support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Ladies and gentlemen, sorry to see you all here again tonight. My name is Randy Kokel, and oops, you did it again. You made me come out at night after a long day's worth of work. And as I mentioned last week, I hate politics. It had been almost 20 years since I've been in these chambers, but now it's the second week in a row. First, I find it thoroughly detasteful, distasteful, that you passed out a revised budget in the beginning of a meeting before the public even had one minute to review it. This is not the way to ensure public support. This does not enhance transparency. I do, however, encourage you to keep seeking public input. Over the course of the last two meetings, about 1,300 people wrote emails and came out to speak about the proposals. Last week, the vast majority, maybe 75% or more, were strongly opposed to the direction the council's heading. People don't live in Huntington Beach because we have a budget surplus deficit or because our budget is balanced. People live here because it is a good place to live with a good balance of services and parks and police and beaches and schools and libraries that we pay for through our taxes. And you can count the letters if you want, but I assure you, taxes is not a four-letter word. Until recently, we've even had a functional government. At least, we had a functional government till December. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that five of the eight city hall heads have left Huntington Beach. So you've got private censorship, secret settlement by the city attorney, paying SEQA funds for a private company, and apparent systematic beheading of our city hall department heads. The question I have is, do you have any idea how ridiculous these activities look to the outside world? How can the council be so hostile to good government that the majority of our department heads have departed in the last six months? At last week's meeting, the overwhelming majority of the speakers and email comments were against Councilperson Vandermark's proposed censorship. What wasn't discussed is that the information in these books is not only not obscene, but is apparently accurate. Nobody spoke about accuracy. The only thing we heard is that some people on the council don't like certain books because they contain explicit information. Explicit means fully and clearly expressed, leaving nothing implied. And whether I'm looking up information about auto repair, music, history, or sex, I want information that is explicit, detailed, and accurate. I don't want government censorship. I don't want the city council to impose a nanny state. I want parents to play the role of parents, and I want you to keep your government hands off our books. Please check your history books. When Senator McCarthy started the Red Scare, he claimed he had lists of hundreds who were secret communists. The list was never released. It appears we are tiptoeing into the next McCarthy era. So far, no list of the allegedly obscene books has been released either. Before we can trust you, you need to release that list of allegedly obscene books with their Dewey Decimal System markings. To my understanding, the $7 million settlement with the air show is not public. This has been repeated in oversight. Councilperson Kalmak has asked for this data. Please correct these oversights and eliminate the proposed censorship.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker. Thanks so much for being here.
Good evening. My name is Karen Jakel, and I'm here on two items that are on the agenda tonight. One of them is paving. I didn't get a chance to look up what the amount of time there is now between paving, and I see that you're reducing it. So since you are reducing it, one of the things I'd like you to really think about is making sure that there's enough in the budget for the temporary repairs for potholes and paving, because I called the city three weeks ago about the street that I travel a lot, which is Springdale from Talbert North, and there's some pretty nasty stuff there. And I made another call another week and a half ago, and I still don't know when someone is going to actually look at that or get back to me about fixing that paving. So I guess getting a little more information as a citizen is both my responsibility and the city's. The second thing I'd like to ask about is, when you decide that you have less staff available for city boards and commissions, and I spent quite a bit of time on a number of those in the 50-plus years I've been here, and one of the pet peeves I have is that people come not prepared to meetings. And so when someone is appointed to be the head of a committee, and when someone on the city staff is appointed to work with that committee, please continue to remind people that they have a responsibility to be prepared in advance and not come to the meeting and expect to be prepared on everything and then do it. We go to those meetings to vote and take action. So please remind people, our good volunteers that really save our city quite a bit of money, that they need to do their homework if they agree to do that. And tonight is my birthday. Best gift you can give me is to pass the budget. Thanks.
Happy birthday.
Hey Karen, can you fill out a blue card, please?
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Larry Sloanam, and I'm a resident here in Huntington Beach for 42 years. Don't get up to speak very often in front of the council, so I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Very disappointed in the behavior of the council in general, especially in comments and the introductory part of it. And I was here at the last Tuesday's meeting and also saw comments made there that were also inappropriate. It's not the way the council works, not the way it should work, it's not the way cooperation works. This should be worked together as we elect you to work as a team to run this city. And I don't know how you're doing it, but if I were to look on the surface of it, from what I've seen, it's not going very well, and it looks like it's going to get a lot worse. So, you know, the way the budget's coming together and the way it's been presented is really difficult for us to understand. We don't have enough time to take a look at it the way you guys have looked at it. And there's a lot of things that bring into question that are really just not well substantiated. A lot of comparisons that should take place and reasons that should be given for why you need to make cuts or why you are saving some programs over others, and why you're pursuing lawsuits that are being pursued. I don't agree with those either. There's not enough information behind them to give us, to give a resident or a taxpayer enough reason or at least enough confidence that what you're, the path you're going down makes a lot of sense. A lot of what's already been said, but, you know, there's comparisons on the, the most egregious example of that is the city attorney's office. And the reasons that I heard tonight weren't really, you know, they were reasonable reasons, but they weren't stated in the budget ahead of time for us to evaluate. So that's not just the only place. There's other departments that are like that and other budget items that are like that, such as the libraries and such as the parks. But you guys are just, you know, we're not, we don't have that sense of transparency. I don't have that sense of confidence and well-being that you guys are really doing what you need to do to tackle the issues that need to be tackled that are fair for everybody. And it's our city, our money. You know, we've contributed for 40 years to this community, and we just don't feel like that's being taken into account. We don't feel like there's a very respect for that.
10 seconds.
From this, from this council. And that's, that really sums it up for me.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you.
All right. Speakers. Yeah, this is the last collection of names. Linda Moon, Kane Durham, Amory Hansen, Oscar Rodriguez, Avery Counts, Mary Jo Berettish, Melvin Sterling, Barry Kylesmire, Patricia Sterling, Arlene Kaplan, Joshua Bean, Kathy Green.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Linda Moon, and I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for 49 years. I also had law practice here for 40 years before I retired. It appears to me that the council majority is having a problem setting priorities. You were elected because you promised the voters that you would maintain the quality of life that we've established in Huntington Beach for decades. But instead of doing that, you are proposing to reduce and degrade services and amenities that are critical to maintaining our quality of life. Clean, well-maintained beaches, streets, sidewalks, parks, landscaping, and public buildings, accessible, well-served libraries, broad-scope senior services, and community recreation services are what distinguish our city from those that many residents moved from and the reason that visitors come for the day or for weeks. At the same time, you're happy to sacrifice limitless funds and thousands of staff hours to pursue unwinnable losses against the state and SAG. You know that the likelihood of success of that litigation is slim at best, and that the city will face millions of dollars of fines. Yet you push forward with the explanation that you would rather go down fighting than go down on your knees. In the meantime, that fight is being fought at the expense of the quality of life that you promised to maintain. I think it's time to swallow your pride and get down on your knees. Start compromising with the state. That is your job. Then maybe we wouldn't need more litigation staff in the city attorney's office. We wouldn't need that big expenditure. The $7 million paid to the air show promoter and the $0.5 million in EIR expenses seems more like political payback to a big campaign donor than legitimate settlement. It's been noted that the city attorney's office is not slated for cuts like almost all the other departments are. And plus, a $100,000 remodel is requested. You haven't linked it that. Meanwhile, the remodel of the city clerk's office, which gets a lot more public traffic than the city attorney's office, has been deleted from the budget. Counsel, please get your priorities in order, and please be assured that spending our money to promote your own personal political ambitions and say, "Shut your ego," will eventually be recognized as graft.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name's Kane Durham, and don't worry, I'm just as tired of being here as you are tired of seeing me. This was supposed to be done last Tuesday, right? I remember sitting here and we had, we pushed it aside. So the last-minute update to the agenda is incredibly confusing. The earlier speaker's comments on, "Is this legal?" has been echoed throughout this chamber tonight, as well as on Twitter, on the folks that are watching the livestream. A number of folks have pointed out that A number of folks have pointed out that not providing this information 72 hours before the meeting is a Brown Act violation. It seems unprofessional at best and undemocratic at worst. This is also an incredibly confusing document. The column on page three, are these cuts or revenue or both? How do I know which is which? A number of us have been up there trying to figure it out and down here trying to figure it out. Discrepancies between the paper given and the presentation on the screen, including the dollar amounts given, is concerning. We, we may have the correct numbers on the paper, I think, but the folks watching on the live stream on YouTube or, or on TV aren't going to understand that. If I was confused, I'm sure they are. This entire process has put us in a situation where we haven't been able to engage properly in the meeting because we're trying to catch up on the last minute changes instead of listening to our peers, or we haven't been able to time, given the time to properly research the proposals. So given that, I'd like to express my support for Circuit. I think it's a fantastic program. For lighting maintenance, which is a good way to keep down pedestrian, pedestrians getting hit and crime and traffic, traffic accidents. I would like to support the community cafe. Strickland, you said earlier that we would come back to Councilman Calmick's question about why there's room for your community engagements but not for the community cafe, but I have not heard us come back to that yet. I would also like to echo Councilwoman Bolton's concerns about hiring new FTEs for the city attorney's office. Hiring full-time employees is, assuming the city is anticipating that these are long-term roles, which is concerning to me. How many years of these frivolous lawsuits with the state are we anticipating? I'm also a little concerned about the city proposing hiring two multimedia employees at the annual cost of around 250K annually. In light of the proposed cuts, it doesn't seem like the most responsible hiring decision. I would like to say that all of my comments here do not reflect my opinion of the city staff. I think you guys have done a wonderful job, and it's not your fault if you are put under pressure by other people. Thank you.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of item Free H, the creation of free new positions in the communications department. These free positions will provide additional resources for the city to expand its communications department. Each position has its own unique role, but they are all part of the same team. Once again, I urge a yes vote on item Free H. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker.
Good evening, city council members, city staff, and fellow residents. My name is Oscar Rodriguez, 26-year resident of Huntington Beach. I am a renter with goals of one day being a homeowner in our great city. I was a former candidate for city council in 2022. I ran against the four new council members, and since the election, I've stayed relatively distant until now. I'm here to share my concerns with the upcoming budget. You know, budgets are a statement of values. Values are a representation of who we are and where our priorities lie in the city. I grew up in one of the lowest-income neighborhoods in Huntington Beach. Libraries are important to me. I pretty much grew up in the public library system myself. While I'm happy to hear that libraries won't be affected in the upcoming budget, I'm here to stand in solidarity with our current library system, the staff, all the youth who utilize this vital service and infrastructure in our community. The reality is that this council has prioritized defunding vital services to low-income residents, many of which are seniors and rely on services such as Meals on Wheels and many others. Lastly, I'd like to say that it's pretty ridiculous that Councilmember McKean and Gracie started their remarks about being fiscally responsible when there's no mention about all the subsidies we've given the airshow. But now we're in this budget predicament because of substantial taxpayer dollars being paid out to Code Four, a private company. Again, I'd like to reiterate that budgets are a statement of values. Values are a representation of who we are and where our priorities are. So get your priorities straight. Support our seniors, our youth, and the residents of this great city. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Barry Kielsmeyer. I've been a resident for 35 years, and before I go farther, I do want to thank the staff and the council for this unbelievable amount of work that you put in. Having said that, I was very, very disappointed to get this document prior to the meeting at the very last minute. It's, it, it tells me that, that, that something is not right and it's, and it's dysfunctional. So given that, and given that we're having to do this last-minute work on the budget, I believe you should give consideration to passing a balanced budget, perhaps as one of the previous mention, people mentioned, of the sixth, and then making the real changes at mid, at the mid-year cycle instead. Because one of the things that strikes me as I'm looking at this is how many cross-currents and how many things that you have to deal with in dealing with this budget. Let me just give you some good news and bad news things, and this is a, a strange compendium of one-time money and ongoing money, so it's, but it's, it's confusing for me and for the public. The good news is, is that per the presentation, we're running a $3.8 million surplus, and we get a $25 million payment from the state. That's great. Don't know what percentage of that is housing and potentially is used for our general fund. But that's $29 million of good news. It's balanced against bad news that the state is no longer paying money that we have to backfill with general funds on the navigation center and other places, and that's because of the lawsuit. We also have, as other people have mentioned, the airshow litigation, the Kennedy Commission, and then something else which is sort of the elephant in the room, which I think drives most of the discussion tonight, which is that we've had to pay more for our public safety. And understand that that's a critical notion, but one of the things I would have appreciated is a very simple balance sheet, which simply says, here's revenue, here is this cost, here's what it was last year, here's what it is this year. It's, it's been like a treasure hunt to go through the
10 seconds.
... to try to, just try to figure out why we're in this situation. Thank you for your time. Again, please give some consideration to what I've mentioned.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kathy Green. I can't tell whether the issue I came about has been eliminated from the list or not, so I'll go ahead and speak. I'm here to speak on, in favor of keeping the Park Ranger Program in Central Park now and in the future. Citizens were complaining about feeling unsafe and threatened while walk, walking in the park. A group of us formed the Central Park Conservancy and went to the city about starting a Park Ranger Program. The city said they had seen the need and had been looking into it, but had not gotten it off the ground yet. Our group committed to raise the $70,000 to fund the program's first year with the city's promise to continue funding in the future. With support from the Huntington Beach Police Officers Association, the Huntington Beach Hospital, and many others, and lots of hard work, the money was raised for the, for the Ranger. The program has been a success. The Ranger has dealt with at least 3,250 issues in less than a year, ranging from unleashed dogs, unleashed dogs, graffiti, vandalism, and other things. He is a deterrent to problems and a goodwill ambassador to park users who feel safe again. At no time, at one time, the police off, department was stationing a patrol car in Central Park for hours. Now, the Ranger handles at least most of these minor crimes, many of which were previously generated a call to the police for service. Plus, it's a great deterrent for many more, all allowing the police department to be available for the all-important work that benefits all of us. The benefits of the Ranger are immeasurable, and the Ranger program needs to be preserved. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Arlene, and I'm delighted to have a short podium so you can see me. I thank you for this opportunity to address you, and thanks to the city staff that came up with some alternatives. I came originally to talk about the library system, and I wanted you to know that I've been a resident of this city for 45 years. My children were raised here. They went to the libraries for research, and my son, who is now a professional filmmaker, was able to check out films. So it's been an integral part of our life. I'm delighted to learn that the branch libraries are not closing, but I'm still unclear as to whether there are hours being cut and security being cut. Also, it looks like the ordinance that looks at whether things are obscene or not is still going forward. On that basis, I am very concerned about that. I've never seen such an assault on our libraries, which to me are not only places of learning, they're places of community gathering. This last Saturday, I went to see the Orange County Photographic Society's exhibit, which was wonderful. And then I picked up this flyer for the Main Street, which, Branch Library, which has loads and loads of activities for both children and adults. And to me, that is community building. That is essential. The optics of this, particularly that ordinance, to me is far more political, and some members of the council are using, were using the budget as an excuse to impose their hierarchical morality agenda on the people of the community. I want you to know these attacks on the library in particular don't go unnoticed. A June 21 opinion piece from the editorial board of the Southern California News Group
10 seconds.
Which includes the Register Press Telegram, said basically librarians have their bias, but there's no reason the city council
Thank you.
... micromanage the imperfect process of book selection.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Thank you.
If there is anyone else left that I did not call your name, here's your opportunity. Otherwise, the public, you can close the public hearing. Mayor Strickland.
Let's close the public hearing. Okay. And then now let's go into the item at hand, the, the budget. So any members want to open? If no members want to open, I'll move that we adopt, let's go back here. The recommended, yeah, that we adopt all the recommended actions. With the exception of What's O? Oh yeah, except in a O. Okay.
And we would also just want to note that for item A, there would be an amended motion just to also adopt the budget but to include the impacts of the POA MOU.
Correct.
The additional parking revenues and the revised budget balancing plan as amended for item N. And then for item N, then we would also, there would be a recommended action to move items two, six, and 16 from level two to level one.
Right.
And then also to approve for the employer work enhancements on level one, option number two. There would be approval to authorize staff to meet with the labor associations on modifications to the employer work enhancements, while also including that there would be a note for city hall to stay open Monday through Friday.
I, I so move. It's been seconded, it's been moved by myself, seconded by Councilman Burns. To call the roll?
No, actually.
Oh.
Sorry.
I, I was asking for a while.
I was, I was just waiting for the conversation to start, so
Okay.
Depending on what parliamentary procedure we're going to use today. Thank you for, again, for staff, for all the work they did on, on doing this this hurry-up offense. This is no way to run a half a billion-dollar organization. I found out this morning that we were making substantial changes to the budget, and residents found out when they got here. The budget was locked last May. It seemed like on June 6, folks had opened the budget for the first time and recognized that there was going to be deficits coming up. This council, back in February, and I don't know if, while I'm speaking, if Sunny, you can bring up the February slideshow, if you've got that somewhat handy?
I do not have that available.
Back in February, this council passed the midterm budget update, which showed projected surplus for 23, 24 of $2 million, 24, 25 of 1.1 million, and then a slight deficit of 2.4 million in '25, '26. So there's some discussion earlier about, you know, placing blame, and I don't want to play the blame game today and lay this out, but the data is all there and sound. There was no time bomb in this budget. There are things that have been happening in the last six, eight months that have really changed the nature of this organization, but to do this in such a hurry-up way, it does a disservice to the residents and to staff and to the community as a whole and businesses as well. This is not what business and the business community thrives on. It's thrive on stability, not changes on Friday show massive cuts to services that folks want, and then somehow magically we've eliminated all of those and we have some open positions, which are going to cause a lot of stress on our budget. You know, I, I do question a couple of items in this budget. You know, the city treasurer, who's not, I don't believe is here tonight, is going to remodel her office. She's welcome to have my office. I don't want to speak for my other council members, but welcome to have that office space to save $100,000 in our budget for one-time costs. Maybe when some of that money comes in from the redevelopment agency, we can put some of those back on the budget, and I do commend the city clerk for giving up that space for this, in these times as we start to move into deficits. Also, I want to, I'll bring back, and I'll let Councilmember Moser maybe discuss about the community outreach versus the community cafes and what that would look like. Again, it's all community outreach, so I don't know why we're, we're bucketing that. I do, though, have the question about, what about '25, '26? Right? So we have another item a little bit later tonight that's another $1,002,000 for police, and obviously, public safety is, is a major priority for me and for the community as a whole, and retention and hiring is obviously something that we've been focused on. But we're not funding this city at appropriate levels. You know, the city, these, our residents want a world-class A-plus city, and we're funding it at about a C level right now, maybe C-minus with this new budget going forward, to provide the world-class services that our residents expect. You know, in previous budgets, and I went back to the 2018 budget cycle and the 2008, 2009, 2010 budgets to start looking at, you know, what happened in the last budget cycles. I talked to previous council members about the previous budget cycles and how they dealt with cuts, and spoke to a couple of folks who had to do it twice through multiple years being on council and understanding, you know, the give and take. And where we were at earlier in the year to where we are at now is a substantial difference. And there's money that's been spent on things that, you know, I voted against, and it's disappointing to see that now that comes back to, to real-world service cuts. But, you know, at some point, we're going to have to have serious conversations about raising revenue to be able serious conversations about raising revenue to be able to provide the services we want. We have aging infrastructure. We have aging parks. We have aging facilities, and we have programs and features that people love in this city. And, you know, we get our 2% annual increase from property taxes. We'll have a cost of goods of, you know, doubled, tripled, quadrupled. So, you know, going forward, you know, we're going to have to, you know, the $1,006,000 that we've discovered here in the budget, I think, is important in revenue raising. I do have some privacy concerns about the license plate readers that we'll probably have to get into in the future, but I do question, like, what happens in 2526? 2526, we're upside down 4.5 million, likely 5.7 million with the PMA contract that likely be completely resolved this Especially with the, you know, the library breaking for $1 million and what's coming down the pike, I do question what happens in 2526. With that, you know, Circuit, I think, is, it sounds like we've gotten there with Circuit. Again, there's money coming in from the state that hopefully by Thursday, it sounds like Circuit's been able to drop that price down. We've got a bunch of emails from folks that have ridden Circuit. I'm assuming that just came from their mailing list of people that have ridden Circuit, and they sent a note out saying, hey, Circuit could go away. Tell people you don't want it. Got hundreds of emails from folks saying they love Circuit and they rely on it, with local residents that live in the downtown area that use it regularly. Public, it's a public transportation option that we contract with a private company. Public transportation does not operate at a profit. There's not a single public transportation system in the world that operates at a profit. The New York subway system, which is arguably the best, arguably, the best public transit system in the United States, still costs about $1 or $2 subsidy a ride. The Orange County Transit Authority's Access Program for our disabled folks that need door-to-door pickup is like $45 a ride. So for $4 or $5 a ride to get folks in and around downtown to take cars off the street, to get folks from the hotels down into our businesses and from their homes down to our businesses, I mean, I saw the heat map. It's dropping everybody off on Main Street. It's fantastic. There's OCTA grants that are coming that we can potentially access by expanding service, maybe to Sunset Beach or maybe up to City Hall here, that I've hopefully checked the boxes that allow us to access those dollars. But, you know, with the state funding, I would like to see us not cut the Circuit project and direct staff to use some one-time dollars, either from the recovery dollars or from, you know, what other, we've got a lot of one-time dollars floating around, to figure out where we can come up with 140-something thousand dollars that we need in order to buy time and then figure out a way to backfill with, if we get state dollars, how we can replace those dollars out, like we've done on other projects when we have different funding sources. But to leave money on the table, which is, my family motto is don't leave money on the table, would be, I think, a disservice to the city and a disservice to residents who rely on this. And if we can expand that type of service, I think, would be excellent. Because right now, we're running it like a kind of a minimum effort, and if we can plus it up with the AQMD dollars and with SB, excuse me, with OCTA dollars from Project B, which is your half-cent sales tax here in the county, which has been, you know, curated for years, and all these other cities up and down the coast are getting access to these local circulators, Dana Point, Newport Beach, and this is ours, and it's been, you know, it's seemingly been successful downtown, and we obviously got a lot of emails supporting it, and only a couple of folks saying, let it die, let it die on the vine. So, you know, again, with this being such a hurry-up offense, and again, a lot of speakers that came down and were like not totally soaked on the fact that we changed this, you know, I'd make a substitute motion to move the existing budget that was posted back in June, along with the revenue raisers from the budget piece, because that may, that will help with later tonight's discussion. I do support going to a two-year budget, but 10 days to review, to have staff do 10 days of work to go find a surplus, there's going to be mistakes, there's going to be easy stuff missed. This is not, again, how you run this. I'd also make my motion would be to remove the city attorney positions. Again, I just don't have the data backup to support that at this point and allow for, you know, come back to council with contracted positions for that as needed, right? You can bring the contracts to council, we can go into closed session if we have to to approve those. But we had a surplus this year, and I don't quite understand why we are fixing 2425 in such a rush when we have landing room to do this in January. And do, I would even recommend doing study sessions over the next couple of months to have the residents get involved in understanding what the cuts that we are going to need to do, and then talk about, you know, talk seriously about, you know, what other revenue sources there are. Is it TOT tax on the hotels so we can, you know, get a little bit more money out of our tourists? Other additional fees that we're not collecting that other cities are collecting, you know, I think our fee study will help with some of those impacts. But to go from a, you know, basically a balanced budget this year to generate a $5.5 million surplus that doesn't carry over and recurring, so it doesn't actually help next year's budget, it just creates one-time dollars that our strategy, our policy puts into our 1-1-5 account, puts into our reserves, you know, doesn't structurally change the budget. I think our structural changes are like $3 million on a $7 million deficit. So we're plugging a lot of holes as we go forward here. And then, again, 2526 gets real broken, as does 2627, and that's assuming CalPERS returns what they're going to return. And if we're going into recession, obviously, you know, we start to worry about CalPERS returns and then our pension costs with our UAL, which we did a, you know, by floating our pension obligation bonds at 2.9%, refinanced that debt down from 7, which saved us, you know, saved us millions of dollars in the long run, I think is at least helped in this situation that we're in now. So that, my motion would be to, again, to move the existing budget as of the 6th, add the revenue raisers that we, that were discovered recently for the $1.653 million, and punt on the rest until the mid-year budget cycle, and let staff have deference on anything that probably shouldn't go forward, that would be, you know, if it gets killed in January. Wouldn't do that. And I think that, and then I'd obviously need staff to help if there's a second on this to make sure the motion clears out, but also to remove those FTEs from the city attorney's office, because that just creates more structural deficit when, at the last meeting, the city attorney said we're only going to need them for two to three years, says this is a cyclical increase in legal services. So for a cyclical resource to add almost $700,000 structural expense when we're looking at larger structural deficits, it seems like one-time dollars for those contracts for a couple of years would make more sense, especially since we've got, you know, $8 million over the next couple of years coming in that could help pay for that, as opposed to plugging salary with that one-time dollars, because that starts to look bad on our financials. So that's my motion, and that's kind of the concerns that I'm at today. I really hope that we can pass a budget tonight and move on with the business of the city and continue, I hope, over the next couple of months discussing, maybe figuring out different revenue sources to offset some of these cuts that are proposed, because we can always, some of these one-time things we can always come back to, and the ongoing expenses unfortunately are just going to get more and more expensive, I think, as we go along. But, yeah, I think we can, you know, talk about some of these at future meetings and not have to do them in what effectively was like two weeks, two weeks-ish to run this. Again, the budget had been published for a month or so prior to. So, again, it's, I didn't like getting a call this morning at 9:30. No offense to staff, but I didn't like getting a call at 9:30 this morning saying, just kidding, everything you said over the weekend has completely changed, and we're going forward with it tonight. That's my motion.
I'll second that. And I will make comments if, yeah, okay. So, thank you. So, yeah, I agree, this process was chaotic. Got the same call this morning with a different plan. There are aspects of it that I'm still trying to figure out. So if I'm still trying to figure it out, and the public is still trying to figure it out, this is just not the right way to do this, certainly not the right way for our residents to hand them something as they walk into a meeting and say, this is what we're going to do now, and this is different from what you saw on Friday. So we have, for example, the Friday document had a surplus of $160,000 for fiscal year 2324. What we got today has a surplus of $6.1 million for 2324. So, you know, my question is, yeah, what is it about 2024? What are we trying to solve for? And why are we doing it this way? Because this just, this just does a disservice to our residents, and I'm really, really unhappy about it. There are a couple of things, too, about the budget as a whole that I want to point out. So as I went through the line items in the big thick book like this, I made some notes of things that we have in there. So, and Sunny, please correct me if I misstate any of these, but we have budget allocating 100, let's see, $1.7 million for loss of housing, grants from the state for failure to have a certified housing element, and then there are more allocations in the years after this coming fiscal year to account for that. $450,000 allocated, looks like for legal liability. I do have a question about that. Do these figures also take into account the possibility that if we lose the lawsuit over the housing element, that there could be penalties imposed on the city of anywhere from $10,000 to $600,000 per month? Are those accounted for in the budget as we have it now?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I would just make one note, though, just to say that going back to slide 27. So on the line right above POA, or right below POA MOU, the line that's listed as unidentified expenditures, so that does account for items such as the PMA contract, potential expenses related to litigation, and any other penalties as well. So we do have kind of a contingency built into this forecast.
So we have a partial contingency.
Yes.
But if the worst happens, we're not, we haven't set aside for that yet, is kind of what I'm getting at.
It's not included in future projections or anything beyond that for 2324, but it's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, a lot of residents have commented about the litigation against the state and housing-related decisions, and, you know, this was sold, I think, to voters as being cost-free, and it is not cost-free. We've got money that we have to set aside now, because, yeah, the state is not kicking in grant money that we were receiving previously, because we don't have a certified housing element. All of these decisions have consequences. So, you know, for the record, I want to say that I think that these decisions are putting the city at financial risk. And the fact that we haven't accounted yet for the possibility that we could have to pay fines as a result of these housing-related decisions is really, really troubling. So I am not in favor of having to do this, despite the fact that, you know, these items are in the budget. We've had a lot of commentary about the airshow. Not in favor of the, you know, settlement amount that's in the budget for that, not in favor of paying $550,000 for the EIR. The budget is structurally balanced. That's good. I'm happy to see that. Again, I just can't get over the way that this whole process has gone down. Really unsatisfied, and would hope that we would create an opportunity for the residents to be involved in discussions about cost and service reductions, because I, you know, based on what we've seen tonight, we've got to do better. Thank you.
Well, I would like to, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, too, have concerns just about the, kind of the chaotic and compressed timeframe with which we've had to, with which staff has had to really do this work over the last number of days, and especially over the last day, really. I think it was in response to, you know, a lot of the challenges and emails from the community, which I think were, they were rightly concerned, as was I, by many of the items that were on the proposed cut list. Councilmember McKean, at the beginning of the meeting, mentioned that this was done, it needs to be meticulous, and we need to take our time, and that's the exact opposite from what's happened. Now, I do applaud Finance for being meticulous and taking their time as much as they can, but within this very short time period. Many people talked today about the requirement or the request for additional public input. I think that that is so important. As has been mentioned, we have a budget for this coming year that is balanced, and I, too, think that we should proceed with that balanced budget and then take some more quality time, allow for more public input. Look at what the potential outcomes and impacts might be of some of these items. You know, one of them was, really the primary one that made an impact here was the managed hiring and ultimately, hiring freeze. I have real, real concerns about that. You know, I think that we have seen a high amount of turnover, especially in our executive-level team, over the past six or seven months. I think one of the emails we received noted that the city has lost nearly 80 years of city knowledge and experience in the past seven months, and that is just five positions that she was able to track, and I know that we're losing another person now. I think that, you know, turnover among government employees is very costly for taxpayers due to the costs of recruiting, selecting, and training new employees, and it also undermines the quality of service that constitutes, the constituents receive from government as the workload is spread across fewer workers. And if we're perpetually operating at the lowest number of people on our teams, that means that if one person can't come in, the whole team suffers. Potentially slower service, more errors, leaner levels of analysis at a time when we need the brain trust here to be able to figure out what we're going to do next. We really need to be able to have strong levels of analysis, and ultimately, this is a strain on employees resulting in potential burnout, and ultimately, people, as has been happening, leaving resulting in institutional, institutional knowledge walking out the door. And I am very concerned about that, and we've already seen it. I, too, have concerns about the city attorney's office. As, you know, I would support the substitute motion, but, you know, as was offered in the original motion, no change was made with regard to the city attorney's office, and there had been discussion about whether there would be a contracted position or positions or FTEs that would proceed, and the motion didn't take that into consideration, which is concerning to me. Also, you know, the city attorney in these chambers has said that there is no cost to additional litigation, and I think that it appears that that is blatantly false. You know, we're looking at more employees, that's $600,000-plus dollars, his increase in pay. You know, obviously, additional litigation, additional workload does have an actual impact to our budget, and I think that it's false not to acknowledge that. So many things on here. In addition to that, also with the airshow settlement, you know, the fact that many people commented that we ultimately have a giveaway of $7 million-plus dollars in addition to a CEQA EIR, which former mayor, I believe Debbie Cook, mentioned, that doesn't happen. We don't pay for private entities for their CEQA EIR. I don't know why we're doing that. For over $500,000. So these are just, again and again, more money that we're giving away. The fact that we don't have a certified housing element, the fact that we're engaging in all of these lawsuits, these have longstanding ramifications for our community, and they're going to come out and, as a statement of values, as Oscar said earlier, in our budget. And I have deep concerns about that. The other thing to get back to, you know, I love Erin, the librarian, coming forward earlier and talking about, you know, what the library is, right? The library isn't just books, you know, it's also book clubs, as she mentioned, the community cafes, other events, other meeting spaces for people. And it's, I do find it interesting that while I so appreciate that all of the cuts for the libraries were taken off of the proposal that's here for future years, that the community cafe was strangely still there as something to remove. And also with that, you know, I did mention earlier that I did talk with community and library services, because, you know, we all have to try to figure out what we can do to save money where we can. But I did find it curious, and I have more to say on this, but why the mayor had said that we couldn't have staff support a program like this, that if we could That if we could get sponsors or others to do it, that's fine, but I'm curious why, Mayor, and I do have more comments after this, but maybe if you can answer, why would you not want staff to support a program like the community cafe? And actually, before you answer, you know, I just feel like I got involved in city government originally because of my concern about the high level of conflict in our community. It's high conflict. It's not a healthy conflict. And I think that it's things like our libraries, like community dialogues, that allow us to really get beyond this really deep-seated level of conflict, have dialogue with each other. And because, and I've said this to people in the past who are like, well, those are soft programs, like what's the value of that? The value of these programs is that if we can't talk to each other, then we can't talk about our future together, and we can't talk about the values that we share together, and again, the budget that we will share together and how that will impact our community. So I would like to understand from the mayor why you wouldn't be able to support staff supporting a program like this. Can you help me understand?
Well, I'll just say, these are not my recommended cuts. I went to staff and asked for the recommendation. That was one of their recommendations, and I just happen to agree. I think that's a good reduction of our spending.
But you specifically said that if the, if the program was able to stand on its own through donors or what have you, that you specifically would not want it supported by any staff time, and that wasn't mentioned for any other item?
Yeah, okay. Well, that's kind of where I am philosophically. You could agree to disagree.
I'd just like to understand where you are philosophically, because I don't think you've really clarified that.
That's right. I believe that our staff, if we move forward and reduce this at staff recommendation, and we vote to eliminate it, at that point, that's not for staff to go, to go man a program that we're not funding.
Do you find value in programs like that? And separately, since you, I'm not done.
We're not gonna get in a debate back and forth.
I have a question about this because you brought it up earlier. So I also, as Councilmember Kalmick mentioned earlier, you have this hundred thousand dollar plus outreach. I would consider it more of a campaign outreach, but that's fine. I do think that we need to have more communications with our residents.
And publicly?
I am not done.
Okay, well, publicly, you and Kalmick have supported that program, just so we're clear.
Sure, but I've also seen how it works, and I don't necessarily agree with it.
You can utilize those services anytime you want, for all seven members of the council.
It's been presented as the mayor's outreach, but, okay.
It was the mayor's idea, but I think it's an outreach for all seven members, and I've always encouraged.
Well, since all seven members have that, I would love to be able to have perhaps twelve thousand dollars of that budget be used for the community cafe. No, no, for the community cafe that already exists, because this is a very well-attended event.
You could utilize any of the city services.
That you never happen to come to. You have no idea what value it provides. As the mayor, I would have really hoped that you would have come, and you were invited.
All right. Again, you're able to use any of the services that we do from the Communications Department. In fact, I encourage you to do it, and you know that, and Dan Kalmick knows it, because I've encouraged you to utilize the Communications Department.
I don't think that's exactly what you've done.
That's exactly what I said.
We'll agree to disagree.
No, that's exactly what I told you. I hope that you can utilize those services. Anyways, my turn. So, people are asking why we're here. Why are we doing this? The most valuable commodity, in my experience in legislature and my experience in government, the most valuable commodity we have is time. Once you spend money, you can't get that money back, just like any family budget. And I believe failures prepare is preparing to fail. After we passed a POA agreement, a lot of the, a lot of the discussion was, hey, this might put a little hole in, you know, fiscal year plus two. At that time, I said, I will do whatever I can to make sure that we are financially sound from that POA agreement. By the way, a POA agreement that passed seven zero. And I believe this, the most central role of government is public safety, and I wanted to give Chief Par the tools that he needed to get those officers back and stop the laterals from going away from our city and getting those law enforcement folks here. We're already safe because we have a great police chief and a great police force, but we're about twenty-eight to thirty-two officers short, and so we'd made that investment. At that time, I asked staff in, in early June, and I said, look, I'm not comfortable with passing a budget on June, I believe, I forgot the exact date, it was early June. And I asked, I asked staff if they would be able to, and talked to their heads of their departments, to come back to make sure down the line that projected twenty-four, twenty-five budget year plus two, that we can get it balanced. Because again, once we spend money, we can't get it back. Staff worked very hard. I commend every department head who participated in this process. I depend, I really commend our CFO, because they were under a time crunch. But again, I want to make this crystal clear to the public. There was nothing on that list that any one of our seven members put out there. This was all staff recommendations. So as the staff realized some of those, some of those ideas were not going to be supported by council members, they came forward and provided the document that we hear today. Now, if we adopt the document that, that I moved and Mr. Byrne seconded, we do have a six million dollar surplus next year. And then we have actually a balanced budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, which is our goal. And by the way, we have balanced budget versus a seven-point-four million dollar deficit if we do nothing. Again, failures prepare is preparing to fail. That's why we're here today. We're here, I asked for modest reductions in spending. By the way, no one's ever complained on the other side about the increases in fees, but we have fee increases on top of it on this budget. And I have to say, this budget balances out in two years. Almost every economist says next year, we're headed for a recession, and we're going ahead, unlike other councils and other cities that wait for an emergency situation where they don't have many options. We're actually fixing the budget today to make sure we're not in that position two years from now. And so I want to commend our CFO. I want to commend our city manager. I want to commend all our senior staff for coming with these modest recommendations, modest reductions. And I want to thank them because, for the most part, when you look at this, this budget's good for city services, it's good for the taxpayers, and it's good for Huntington Beach. And it prepares us so we don't have to have a fire sale or something in two years from now where we can't get out of a situation. So that's why we're here, and that's why I moved my recommendation. So I commend, again, all the recommendations, all the hard work the staff did. I really appreciate it, and I'm proud of this budget that's before us today, and I hope we pass it.
I just had a couple of questions and wanted to clear up a few misrepresentations. First one, on the misrepresentation side, going back to some comments, plenty of comments, actually, in the past, and then some emails that have been sent out, was that the, the city has a budget shortfall because of the airshow settlement, which they say is seven to eight million dollars. First of all, this number seems to keep increasing every week, when the actual number is four point nine million, with one point nine paid this year, and the remaining amount paid in increments of five hundred thousand dollars for the next six years. And people have talked about, I guess, this other two to three million that somehow gets to eight, but that is contingent on if we get proceeds as part of our pending litigation with the oil company. So I know people had made comments about that, but that's pending litigation still with the oil company. And obviously, these amounts are not why we have a budget shortfall in future years. The one point nine million this year is already budgeted, and this is not to mention the massive economic impact the airshow brings our city every single year, and the thirty million dollars that City Attorney Gates is bringing back to the city. So this has nothing to do with structural, ongoing revenues and expenses. And so I just, my question to you, Sunny, is based on, I know the one point nine million is budgeted this year, but what's the financial impact of the five hundred thousand dollars each year over the next six years?
So that's already incorporated in the projections that are shown on the slide above.
Thank you. And then a couple of questions for the city attorney. A lot of talk about these housing lawsuits. I guess what's the percentage of the housing suits that you currently have compared to, I guess, like other suits that we're dealing with?
So of the forty-plus lawsuits, active lawsuits that we have going on right now, we have two that are active housing suits, and that doesn't include the attorney's fees appeal request. We have a petition for review submitted to the Supreme Court. So two and a half are housing lawsuits out of the forty-plus. Most of our lawsuits are defending the good work of our police department. We have a number of active lawsuits where our police officers are being sued. Accidents, we're defending the city with regard to accidents on public property, whether it's intersection cases or sidewalk cases or whatever, and then motor vehicle accident cases. As you probably know, even, you know, recently, the Page case with the two Edison High School students, I mean, that turned into a lawsuit. So we've got a whole host of active litigation, almost, I mean, just a couple cases with regard to housing.
Okay. And then I mentioned, I know the question had come up about your office remodel. I mean, do you have a budget for that?
So I'm not sure where that came from. I literally have no plans to remodel the office. I've got no, I've requested zero money for a remodel. I don't know if issues got conflated, but there is not a, no plan and not a single dollar for a remodel, but, yeah.
Okay.
Before we leave that.
That was the, are you done?
No. No, I just want to clarify to the community one more point here, just so we're all on the same page. Give me one second. So on the initial, initial motion and budget, just want to clarify that we are, what we're not cutting, we are not closing or reducing hours at any libraries, we are not cutting senior center hours, tree trimming, beach restroom cleaning, call center staff, park rangers, Edison Murdy Park hours, downtown power washing, Pier Plaza Bluff Top Sunset Landscaping, code enforcement technician, and the Economic Development Manager. Just want to make sure that's clear to the community. Thank you.
And Mayor, can I add one more comment for clarification, too? There's a lot of comments made about costs of lawsuits, and I get what Councilmember Bolton said about SB two funds and potential for penalties, things like that. There's always going to be those types of costs associated with litigation. What I have said before, I have said repeatedly, and I will say again, that when we do work in-house, the lawyer cost, the lawyer's time doesn't increase with additional lawsuits. There's this misunderstanding in the public that if we have more lawsuits on hand, we're suddenly costing them, by attorney time and attorney cost, more money, and that's categorically not true, as so long as we keep it in-house. If there's, for whatever reason, we have to go outside, then we are paying per hour on that. And I just want to make that clear. I mean, even, you know, a public comment last week from somebody who's still here in the audience said, you know, tens of millions of dollars in attorney time on lawsuits, and that, it's just not true. We do have one case, the Kennedy Commission fees that we are facing, having to reimburse to the tune of three point five million, as you know, which is what's going up to the Supreme Court, hopefully. That's an anomaly. That is an attorney's fees reimbursement to the other side on a case that the court awarded. In all of our other cases, we just don't have that situation. So in terms of attorney's fees, attorney's time, attorney's costs, it's, it's just a non-issue. So I just wanted to make that distinction. I think it's an important one.
Councilman?
Yeah, so I'm glad you asked that question, Councilmember McKean, about the number of housing lawsuits, because we should actually all know what litigation we have active. So I wanted to ask the city attorney if we could get a list of all active litigation matters so that we're aware of what we're involved in, because I don't know the answer to that question.
It's easy to give you a whole list, sure.
All right. Do you want, okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Quick follow-up. See, I don't, I guess the question that Councilmember McKean asked is there housing lawsuits, right? I don't know if it's the number of suits, right? It's really the number of hours that are spent on them, right? I wouldn't think that, like, you could have five nothing suits that are sticking, or ten or twenty nothing suits, and then two huge suits that are taking up all your staff time. And then to your comment that you made just at the end about the people in the public thinks it's billable hours and the billable hours go up, no, no, it's, it's the fact that you're requesting for more attorneys for your workload. That's, I think, the, that's the cost that I think folks are concerned about. I think you're framing the argument through a straw man discussion of like what your residents believe it is. I don't think that's what they believe at all. I think, I, I believe that they, that we're, that you're requesting more attorneys because your workload's increased. So there, again, I think there is, there's a non-zero cost associated with more lawyering.
I completely understand that point, and I guess what I would say is this. I think the number of cases that the city's involved in where we are on the plaintiff's side is fewer than five. So of the forty-plus cases we have on hand, we are a defendant. We can't control the volume of those cases, right? When we get sued, we have to defend. So you're right. You're, I mean, to the extent we have to add more resources, which is a cost to the taxpayer, that's a real hard cost. But that's just uncontrollable. I mean, the cases, the ninety-five percent of the cases that we have where we're on the defense side, the city doesn't ask to get sued. You know, we have to deal with that. And in addition to that, what the four includes is additional prosecution of crime, additional municipal law support. So when departments or city council or, you know, whoever, even some of our lawsuits need land use expertise or municipal law expertise, that person's on hand to do advisory type of stuff. So we're not stacking a team of litigators. We're literally just asking for one more litigator, so.
Okay, I, I don't know. I'm gonna, I don't know if I'm gonna get the answer that I, that I'm looking, trying to at least understand, so we'll move on. You know, Councilmember McKean, you talked about the list of things we're not cutting today. Again, like, I even feel like, you know, staff brought up, it's almost a, here's the stuff that was asked for, and staff did their work. I don't think they did, I don't think they were able to do the thoughtful dive that you would normally do in something like this, which would take a year, not twenty days. So again, I pose up my question again, what happens in 2025? We didn't cut all these things now, but what happens in 2025 when, if everybody's still here with a four and a half million dollar deficit? That's the question for 2025. And I do ask, I do ask why tonight, right? Why tonight? Why tonight do we need to fix 2024's budget when we have plenty of time over the next six months to do it at mid-year budget?
I believe I articulated that in my comments.
I understand you want to have a balanced budget for 2425, but we're not spending any of that money, and we can make the changes over the next year involving people.
If we don't make reductions today, and we wait six months, that's six months of spending that we don't recoup those savings.
Is it, though?
Yes, it is.
I don't, I don't know if it has to be that.
If you spend money for six months, you can't get that money back.
Yeah, but some of these programs don't function that way, though. So like, some of these are, some of these are one-time funds, some of these are like minuscule, ongoing expenses, and some of that money hasn't even been spent yet. So we're not actually spending money, we're not appropriating, we're budgeting, and so we could budget, we could adopt.
That's why, that's why when you look at the budget, that staff recommended on level one, savings are immediate. They say effective July one, so the savings are immediate.
There's savings in the budget, we're not actually spending the money, though. We're not appropriating.
Yeah, so, so we're saving because a budget, as you know, is the blueprint from last year's budget.
Yeah, but we're not actually spending the money, so I'm actually getting the real cash? Like, honestly, I'm getting the real cash?
No, we're getting savings because, again, everything's projections, and everything, every program has a cost of money. If you don't have a program for six months, you have six months of savings.
The point that I'm making is that if we eliminate the My Sidewalk Dashboard Program, or we eliminate the IS Van Service, like, staff's, that's budgeted, knowing that this is, that these items are on the list, the city manager can see that, like, we will be addressing these in the future, so let's not go out and buy a new IS van today as we're moving forward. I just look at this as a, as a very rushed process, and that we could absolutely do this with residents. I do want to actually just touch on the airshow for one quick second here, and there's waived parking fees that were kind of hand-waved over. There's also half the settlement that residents haven't seen yet, so I, you know, Sunny brought up the, the fact that some of this is the payments out to the airshow are budgeted. And, but what's not budgeted is, you know, we, I think what's public, and it's hard to know what's public at this point, is.
Is there any part of the airshow settlement you have not seen? You, personally?
Personally?
Yeah.
I don't have a copy of the airshow settlement?
Is there any part of that airshow that you have not seen?
I have not. I have not, I have seen the airshow settlement in the, in Mr. Gates's office, but I wasn't allowed to take notes.
Is there any line that you did not read?
I read the entire document, but I don't have, I don't have it for reference sake, to be able to make decisions. Also, the public doesn't have it, so I think from a, like, again, does this, wait, I'm sorry. Sunny, do you have a copy of the settlement, the settlement document to be able to do budget projections on, or your budget projections just based on what you saw publicly?
I do not have a copy of the settlement agreement.
So staff doesn't even know what's in the settlement agreement to do budget projections. So again, I think that we have a balanced budget, and we have a lot of unknowns.
But you're acting like there's some huge number or something that's there.
I can't talk about it.
That, that you haven't seen.
It's not that I haven't seen.
All right, I'm hoping that it gets out soon, just so you know where I'm coming from.
We can make a motion and waive and release it right now.
I hope that it comes out soon.
The city attorney released a memo, the financial terms, what are you talking about?
It's missing things that are in the document.
All right.
It's missing substantial information that the public needs to see. If we want to release it to the public, we can make a motion, have it waived privilege, and release it right now.
I want to ask the city attorney reasons.
No, look, I mean, this is pretty simple, and I've said it repeatedly, I've put it in writing a number of times. There's a whole host of reasons why this is not a public document. One of which is there's pending litigation, and we're simply not required to disclose a document like this that may impact or affect pending litigation. That's one. Two, as the council members know, which I won't get into publicly, there is some additional information in there, and it is not part of the final settlement that results in the dismissal. So that's all I can say about it right now. And at the end of the day, look, I don't want to be responsible for deviating from what the law requires me to do in a way that may ultimately compromise the city of Huntington Beach, right? So, but if a judge tells me I have to release it, I'm happy to release it. I just don't think, that's not my, my role is to follow the law. And we've followed the law on this, on the non-release of the settlement agreement. We followed the law in revealing every single term of the settlement agreement that got the case dismissed as to the city that would impact the taxpayers. We have released that information. We've done what we believe the law requires, and I've gotten multiple legal opinions from other attorneys on this very issue. Now, again, there's a lawsuit. It's going to be before a judge. We're going to request an in-camera review. In-camera means that the judge gets to view the entire settlement agreement behind closed doors and review it and make a decision on his own. If the judge says yes, release it, then I'll be happy to release it. And I'm sure the council will be happy to release it. But until that occurs, I don't feel comfortable doing it, because I do believe with all my heart that based on what I know, that this document could impact future litigation or pending litigation. And I'm just not going to be responsible for putting harm to the city because of a couple eager and ambitious folks in the community who feel like they deserve or they need to see it now. The law doesn't say it is so, and until a judge says it's so, I'm just not going to do it.
But with that.
We have a motion on the floor?
Yeah. This, first, we have to do the substitute motion. Kalmick motion, and Bolton seconded, so let's put that substitute motion up for a vote.
Does staff have enough information to understand what the motion is? I mean, I doubt it matters, but.
I believe so.
Okay.
I think so. Okay, are we ready?
We're ready.
All right, we'll call for the vote. Councilmember Kalmick.
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Oh.
Strickland?
No.
McKean?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Okay, now, Madam Clerk, the original motion by myself, seconded by Burns, please call the roll.
Clarification on that motion, just because there was some stuff that was brought up. So we are not making any changes to the city attorney's budget, and we're going to cut circuit from our budget completely.
I want to ask you about circuit. So is there a required city match?
For the money from the state?
Yeah, for any of the money that we're getting for circuit.
So, so, okay, so there's.
So I'm just asking, is there a general fund impacted Huntington Beach in order to continue circuit?
Tomorrow, or like July 1st? Yes, there would be about $160,000 one-time fee that circuit has come down on. And I think circuit can speak to, or staff can probably speak to exactly what that, what that looks like. There's an AQMD grant that's out now that is 279, where's my notes on that? AQMD gave us a grant for $279,000 for circuit. It requires a $279,000 local match.
I'm willing.
But what didn't?
I'm willing to put this over till, if it's okay with the members, to January 1st. So circuit to January 1st. So we fund it to January 1st. If we don't have the funds by January 1st, then we will eliminate the program.
That's what I was going to say, is Dave Min's money going to cover it in whole?
Yeah, it should, I mean, for the next.
Well, it will give us, it will give us time to see if we can get AQMD money. It will give us time to see if we got that state money, the state budget gets adopted. And not only gets passed, but my experience is, a lot of times, governors align on vetoes. We don't know if the governor's going to align on veto that program. So what, I will be amenable to amend my motion on circuit that we will eliminate circuit January 1 if we don't come up with the entire funds, but none of the funds will come out of Huntington Beach. We'll have six months to deal with that program.
Mayor, can I ask something?
I understand that circuit, if I'm wrong, correct me, please, but I think it operates from about Golden West to Beach, south of Adams. That's a pretty small percentage of this city that it really truly benefits. And that's one reason I am like cost-conscious of that. It's a very small percentage it's serving within the community. And that's, that's where my.
Would you be open to waiting until January 1?
Yes, but if it's fully funded, yeah, no problem.
Would you be willing to, again, amend the motion? You seconded it, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
To wait till January 1?
As requested.
Okay, all right. So it's been moved and seconded with that clarification.
I'm sorry, I think city attorneys know, I didn't get an answer on that. We're going to fund all four positions for the city attorney?
We're, yeah.
Okay, I was just, because there was discussion earlier from Mr. McKean that we weren't, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll start the vote. Councilmember Kalmick.
I, but put me as a no for the city attorney positions, please.
All right.
Hold on, can you do that?
Just in the minutes.
Well, it's just really.
It's a whole budget document, he has to vote yes or no.
I think he's passing your motion, he's just making.
But, but he doesn't have the ability to do that. He has to vote yes or no on a budget. He can't say one line I'm not good with. That is not, check the Roberts rules and check the city attorney, you cannot do that.
Mr. Peterson did that quite a bit.
With the way the motion was presented, it's up or down. It's up or down.
I'm pretty sure Mr. Peterson did this.
Yes, I'm sure he did.
Then someone wasn't here that followed Roberts rules, but we're following Roberts rules, and we're following the rules today.
So odd that most of the people are still here for that one, so, aye.
Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Passes as presented.
Well, members, I will say that's a great budget when we can get all seven of us 7-0. And again, I want to commend city attorney, not city, city manager Al Zelenka and Sunny Hahn for all the hard work and all the department heads. Let's give them another round of applause for all the hard work they did for the budget. All right, members, we do have one more item on the agenda. Item number four, staff, please introduce your report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Representatives from the city staff and members of the police management group have met during the month of June to meet and confer for successor member random of understanding. On June 13th, we reached a tentative agreement for successor MOU. On June 20th, the city council voted affirmatively to introduce the PMA labor agreements for formal consideration. Some of the terms of this agreement is that it's a three-year agreement, beginning July 1, 2023, going through June 30th, 2026, with 5% wage increases for each fiscal year of the contract. There will also be increases and adjustments to various pay programs such as advanced post certificate pay, executive development, longevity pay, and acting assignments. There's also clarification for comp time off, cash out of that time, and also increases in the city contribution for health benefits. The fiscal impact over the three-year period is $1.2 million for this three-year contract. City council options would be to authorize the city manager to take all administrative and budgetary actions necessary to implement Resolution Number 2023-32. Alternately, the city council could not approve that resolution and direct staff to either continue to meet and confer with the Police Management Association or utilize the impasse procedure contained within the city's employer-employee relations resolution. There any council, or excuse me, questions from council?
I would like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-32, a resolution of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach approving and implementing the member random of understanding between the Huntington Beach Police Management Association and the city of, and the city for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kalmick. Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passes 7-0.
All right, members, do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion?
When? The folks, no, the next meeting is not July 5th.
Yeah, no, I'm going to, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Finance Authority is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023.
If we could, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Mike Vigliotta, who will be leaving our personage here at the end of the month and moving to the city of Orange.
Is he here? Where'd Big go? He left? He's already north.
He still, he still gets the honorary and the.
Thanks, Big, for that. We love you, Big. All right, we're adjourned.